Funny Valentine.
Funny Valentine.
I'm a funny Valentine. This will be my funny Valentine. Yeah.
Right, you're not the one who's gonna be Valentine.
What?
I remember this girl, like, she was...
Oh, God.
Yeah, she gave me a Valentine. She was really cool. She was like, picture of, uh, the archival brand. But it had like eleven letters in it. It seemed like, like, you, like, it didn't have any... She was creepy. She was gonna sue us. Yeah, she is. All right, here we go. She was the reason I couldn't play drums. Why? Is she called the drummer? Yes. Two, three, two, and one, two, three.
I am doing a moment of silence for the ball.
Okay.
If I told you, you wanna picture me to Carol?
Yes, I do. I can do it by the way.
Okay.
I might just mention, thank you. People will know. By all means, guys.
Just kinda outline a little bit of a, of a...
Who's making the budget for this?
Um, it's David and David. Some of the people that I can think of.
And so after David, David can introduce you, or do you can just step up? I mean, you know the drill.
You wanna press these then?
Yeah.
I'll, um, I'll have to...
Hey! We need a guest.
Hi, guys.
Hi.
Good work. Proud of you.
I think there is, but I don't think, I think there's... Yeah, you know, the job my fair, if I don't want to, sometimes I can see. Yeah, I think. Yeah, there is. It's been a minute. It's been a minute. Now, it's yesterday, it wasn't, but it is. It's an event. I know. You wanna know? Yeah. Yeah, no, I'm, uh, that's a great, uh, big cheer. I'm very, uh, much, uh, you know, I'm, uh, yeah. Yeah, I'm, uh, yeah, I'm, uh, yeah. Yeah, no, I'm, uh, that's a great, uh, big cheer. I'm very, uh, much, uh, you know, I'm, uh, yeah. I am trying to, uh, I'm gonna have a little... Yeah, maybe. Yeah, I'm, uh, yeah, I'm, uh, yeah. Yeah, I'm, uh, yeah, I'm, uh, yeah. And if that's again, yeah.
You and I won't get that. Yeah. Yeah. And I never realized he took a picture with their own crew. Yeah, I don't know how you do that. The kids are the kids, you know what I mean? Yeah. These kids are fake kids. They're a fake kid. They're a lot of... Yeah. Yeah. They're all fake. They're all fake. They're all fake. They're all fake. They're away. You know, uh... Budget is a mandate. I don't, I don't really care. I don't see, I don't like, I don't care. I don't care about any of that. I'm gonna get home in time. Yeah, let's go another night. We're gonna go more, we're gonna get this budget to the yo-yo. Yeah. So we're done at that. We're done. No, I don't envy what you gotta do. Thank you. Very welcome. You guys are a big head. Enjoy it. Paul's gonna help you get out of here.
Oh, that's all right. We can go...
Yeah, but he's gonna help you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. There we go. There's the loadout, the loadout team.
All right, nice.
Jackson Robbs Group, the loadout.
Probably the best group, I'll add, or in a round, or just so we don't have to walk with the stadium. Guys, I don't know if it's wrong, but I wanted to say that, uh... Trump said, "Face in with the right valve, stand to go in the middle." And I can really doubt it, maybe in a term of engagement, unless you're graduated.
Some are, some aren't.
Senior?
Oh, wait, I'm from, where are you going to college?
Yeah.
Where are you going?
Berkeley.
Berkeley? This is all... Don't you need a code on?
I know, I know.
Soon there. Yeah. Good luck to you. You've got a great leader.
Well, thank you, that's nice to say. I enjoy it.
Hey, Alex, thanks a lot. I spoke into it.
No.
Oh, he's got it, okay.
See him up there?
Yeah. He'll turn it on.
Good evening, we'll be starting in a couple minutes. Please take a seat. Thank you in advance for coming. That we have what?
Seats down front.
Okay.
Can we announce when any non-voters, with the exception of non-voter department heads, need to be seated at the far back of the gymnasium? So I moved the school committee people over to ours.
Oh, okay, well...
People are complaining that they're seeing blue cards and, I think I took care of it, but...
There are seats up front. Plenty of good seats. It's like being at church.
It's Tom's.
It's Tom's amendment, yeah.
Let's see, where do I begin? What do I really need most? I need this thing. Does this say who's making the motions? Yeah, this is what I need, right?
And this is for you, so that you know the warrant was duly...
Do I have to read that thing about the constable, too?
Nope.
Okay.
You never do, so why start out?
I never do, right.
Uh, but you can, you can simply say that it is, uh, that the return, that you've been notified that the, that the town warrant was duly posted and...
Okay. Two-minute warning.
I think it's good that you're...
There are still seats up front, and you have a better view of the screen. There's also a screen up back, so you'll be able to see the presentations.
Could you also announce that the bleachers are for non-voters only? Voters are asked to come forward.
The bleachers are for, uh, non-resident, non-voters, preferably. So... Okay, let's, uh, I'd like to officially open the annual town meeting of the Town of Yarmouth, April 25th, 2023. My name is Ken Mudi, I'm the town moderator. Uh, I'd like to, uh, first of all, make some acknowledgements, um, the, of, just to take priorities as they are. I hope you all enjoyed the music from, uh, the, the D Y Band. There's a little bit of an experiment, and I asked them to play songs that was from a person my age's iPod, and I, I think they, they accomplished that. Uh, so I, I attribute to them, and I'd like to acknowledge them by name, Alex Pendleton and his S Street Band. Alex is the music director, and the, he did a great job. And the logistics, the logistics aren't great. The band includes Quinn Rodericks, Ally Jones, Campbell Graham, Ryan Shea, Caleb Schreiber, Dylan O'Keefe, Chiara Barbosa, Alex Finn, Jacob Vincent, and Miles Hill, so thank you very much to them. I'd also like to take the agenda a little bit out of order by starting with introductions of people on the stage. First of all, there's a, um, a wonderful turnout of citizenship tonight, and a number of you, this may be your first town meeting, and, and hopefully will be far from your last, but you might not know the sort of order up here. Sitting next to me is town clerk Mary Maslowsky. To my left, and I call Mary first, because I always forget her, because she's sitting next, next to me. Uh, to my left is the Board of Selectmen, and a couple other important people, Dorcas McGurran, Chairman Mike Stone, Dan Horgan, Mark Forrest, our Town Council Jay Tellerman, Town Administrator Robert Wittenauer, and Assistant Town Administrator Bill Scott, and a special shout-out to Bill, who does so much of the, the background work for, to set up this meeting, along with Paul Schiaffrey, our IT Director, so thank you to them. I also am gonna turn, behind me is the Finance Committee, and I'm gonna ask Stephanie Cox, Chairman of the Finance Committee, to introduce her members.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Stephanie Cox, Chair of the Finance Committee. To my right, George Perkins, Vice Chair. We have Richard Simon, our Secretary, Bob Harding, and Rafael Gutierrez. And you can also see, uh, right on page one in your Town Meeting Warrant, the Finance Committee's report, which I encourage everyone to take a look at. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie. And, um, like, we'll begin some of the proceedings, but the, the first one is a, a pretty serious one. Uh, I'd like to take a few moments, uh, to recognize a, a tragedy in our, in our community. Paul Funk, who was the principal at D Y School, who was, uh, had, had a tremendous impact over, uh, many people in this community, and, uh, in both academically as well as athletically. And, uh, as many of you know, Paul tragically passed away a couple weeks ago at a young age, so I'd like to ask the entire audience to, uh, stay seated, but have a, a moment of reflective silence for Paul. Thank you. Thank you. Now, would you please all join with me as we stand and pledge our allegiance to the flag? Now, in the spirit of even more of a tribute to our great country, we have two more D Y students, Vivian Costano and her sister Eliana, who will sing a word, a song I can never remember the words to, our National Anthem.
Give it a shot.
Is it on? Oh, there it is, okay. Oh, say, can you see, by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Hope you all agree with me that the folks down here playing the music and the folks up here, that's our future. So, and I think we're in pretty good shape. Uh, I'll, I guess I'll turn to Mike before I do the guidance for your statement, Selectman's statement.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen, I welcome you to the 2023 Yarmouth Annual Town Meeting. This year brings the town to an historic meeting of its legislative body comprised of you, the citizens of the town, as we seek your approval to embark on a long-awaited project to mitigate and ultimately reverse the environmental damage that has occurred over the course of many decades, decades to the water quality in our coastal embayments, rivers, and ponds. The unbridled growth and development since the 1950s, with its corresponding expansion in the number of subsurface septic disposal systems, has caused extensive nitrogen loading to an alarming degree in three of our major water bodies, Vass River, Parker's River, and Lewis Bay. This outflow of nitrogen from these systems into the groundwater also poses a continuous threat to the quality of our drinking water. The solution being proposed is the creation of a new wastewater treatment system for our town, which has been under consideration for a number of years with a concentrated effort by the Board of Selectmen, the Water Resources Advisory Committee, our staff, consultants, designers, and engineers. This remedial action is necessary to protect the future environmental integrity of our embayments, rivers, and ponds, and our groundwater supply. You will hear details, not only about the planning and design of this system, but also the balanced financing piece, which we believe, taken together, make the proposed wastewater system the best possible solution to the nitrogen overload at the greatest value for our residents and property owners, both now and in the future. We are convinced that the impact of not moving forward with this article would be very costly to the town. It would not only leave critical environmental interest unabated, but would also put a heavy financial burden on each homeowner required to follow the regulations proposed by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, otherwise known as the Mass D E P. These regulations would require installing very expensive innovative and alternative septic systems at individual homes and other properties, which would not be as efficient in removing nitrogen as a central townwide water system would. Additionally, these innovative and alternative systems would be much more expensive than approaching the problem collectively as a community. In addition to wastewater, tonight's warrant presents a wide range of other important articles necessary to carry out the business of the Town of Yarmouth. We're happy to report to you that this year we are presenting a fully balanced budget with no need for an override. We have continued with coordinated efforts and strong communication with all town departments and our regional education partners throughout the detailed budget-reviewed process. We thank them for their roles in achieving this result. Tonight, we are also posed for somber reflection as we seek funding for our public safety agencies to conduct state-of... as we seek funding for our public safety agencies to conduct state-of-the-art active shooter training to help better prepare the town for the type of unthinkable tragedy that we have seen too many times throughout our nation. And this same reflection continues as we seek to appropriate funds received by Yarmouth from some of the class-action opiate lawsuits. These funds will be earmarked for direct services for drug abuse prevention in an effort to help protect our community from this deadly and tragic epidemic. As you will no doubt glean from the presentations for each article, our staff and volunteers have put a great deal of thought into the proposals that this town meeting will act upon. We appreciate their considerable efforts in the preparation of the agenda for your consideration tonight, as well as for the work that will be required to implement the actions taken by you on these various sworn articles. The importance of your service as the legislative body for the town of Yarmouth cannot be overly emphasized and is greatly appreciated. On behalf of the entire Board of Selectmen, I thank you one and all for participating in Yarmouth's 2023 Annual Town Meeting.
Thank you, Chairman Stone. One other item before I get into the, the guidance, or the ground rules, so to speak. I'd like to acknowledge several people who had a tremendous impact on this town in the past over 40 years, and have retired from service to the community. Bruce Murphy, pretty well-known. Ed Centeo, our former Finance Director. And last but not least, Carol Woodbury from the school. I'd also like to introduce, I think he's here, our new Fire Chief, Enrique Arisque. He's in uniform tonight, so hopefully you don't have to leave suddenly. Okay. Guidance, I try not to go too deep into like rules and regulations, but there are a lot of, a lot of fairly new people. And I think the general ground rule that I have is I like to, like to think of it as the two Cs, democracy and efficiency, meaning we really want participation, but we really also want to be efficient and, and get, get to the, to the, to the, the heart of the matters. So you can see it on the screen, questions, the microphones, there's two microphones in the aisles, two microphones off the, off the stage. If you have a question or a comment when we call for them, stand up and line up and you'll be called upon. Any amendment that is made, recommended, must be put in writing and brought up here. We'll provide the paper and pencil and, and all that kind of stuff. We do like to speak to the topic under discussion. When we do have a vote, we ask you to hold your pink card up so we can see it. And non-resident adult attendees must sit in the non-voting section and will not take part in any of the voting. For, for the record, there are some non-residents who are here that will be authorized to provide information if needed. Those have been pre-approved and cleared through me. So that, that's how that works. I also wanted to, in, in the interest of efficiency, to, we're gonna, I've asked the presenters and petitioners to try to keep a presentation to no more than six minutes. That's not always possible, but it's a, it's a guardrail. And for those who are bringing up questions or comments, to keep them to within three minutes. And the reason I say that is because, you know, I, I don't think anybody likes a moderator or something like that to go, hey, could you hurry it up? Could you move it on? Come on, let's go. We're not going to do that. But we do, it's sort of like the honor system that we do want people to recognize that if it's been said once or twice, it's probably been said enough. And to, to keep it as concise as possible without disrespecting anyone or not giving anyone the chance to express their views as a citizen of this community. So that's, that's, that's the, what we, what we ask and we know that is appreciated. With that, I also do have to mention that the, the, the opening of the town meeting has been presented to the local post offices upon the regulations required by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. That's all, I'm sure I'm not saying it right, but we're good. We're good to go. So we can probably begin with Article One. Dorcas McGurran?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article One as printed in the warrant. Board of Selectmen recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Explanation?
The purpose of this article is to fund any budget shortages for the current year. The supplemental funding for construction and demolition materials is needed to cover a higher-than-expected volume of waste material received at the town disposal area. The C and D expense, or construction and demolition material expense, is covered by the revenues paid to dispose of these materials.
Motion's are made and seconded. Do we have questions or comments about Article One? Seeing none, I'll accept a voice vote. All in favor of Article One, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The article carries unanimously. Article Two, Mike, Mike Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm required to read a lengthy motion for Article Two to identify for the record the funding sources of various line items in this article. The motion will be on the screen so you can follow along. I move the various sums under the column headed FinCom FY24 be appropriated for their respective purposes and to fund such article with funding from taxation, local receipts, and the following appropriations and transfers. Transfer the sum of $12,000 from Wetlands Protection Fund for CD-1 Community Development Wages. Transfer the sum of $7,000 from Waterways Improvement Funds for CS-3 Natural Resources Wages. Transfer the sum of $78,000 from Ferry Tax for CS-3 Natural Resources Wages. Transfer the sum of $1,800,000 from Ambulance Reserve for appropriation for PS6 Fire Department Wages. Transfer the sum of $150,000 from PEG Access Fund for MO-1 Information Technology Wages. Transfer the sum of $200,000 from Recycling Fund for PW-12 Sanitation Expenses. Transfer the sum of $30,000 from Gifford Cemetery Fund for PW-15 Cemetery Wages. Transfer the sum of $40,000 from Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund for PW-15 Cemetery Expenses. Transfer the sum of $15,000 from Cemetery Sale of Lots Funds for PW-15 Cemetery Expenses. These amounts total $2,330, $3,000, $2,000, excuse me, $2,332,000.
Do we have a second? Motion has been seconded. Recommendation?
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee unanimously recommends as well.
Comments? Questions?
This article funds the town's operating budget, which covers employee salaries, benefits, and other town operating expenses. At the direction of the Board of Selectmen, this budget is balanced, affordable, within the parameters of Proposition Two and a Half, and provides the best possible services and facilities to the town. The Finance Committee has reviewed this budget in detail.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, Jim Saban, Yarmouth Port. In reading the transfer of funds, the Selectmen said, "Transfer 1.8 million in fire alarms, fire to wages," which is PS5 in here, but PS6 there. He said PS6, but in the book, it says PS5 for wages, and 6 is training. It should be amended to PS5.
Okay. So the budget has been moved, seconded. No further questions? Can we take a vote? All, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay. The motion carries. Article Three is Dorcas McGurran.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article Three as printed in the warrant.
Do we have a second? Okay. Recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends unanimously.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends unanimously.
Explanation?
This article is the operating budget for the Gulf Division and funds employee salaries, benefits, and other Gulf operating expenses. This year's budget is funded entirely by Gulf fees and other revenue generated by the Gulf Division.
Questions? Comments on Article Three? Hearing none? Seeing none? Take a vote. All in favor of Article Three?
Aye.
All opposed? The article passes unanimously. Article Four, Dorcas McGurran?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article Four as printed in the warrant.
Seconded. Recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends unanimously.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends unanimously.
Explanation?
This article is the operating budget for the Water Division, which funds employee salaries, benefits, and other water operating expenses. The Water Division operates as a distinct special revenue fund, which, like the Gulf in septic operations, is fully funded by water fees.
Questions? Comments? Take a vote. All in favor of Article Four, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The article passes. Article Five, again, Dorcas McGurran?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article Five as printed in the warrant.
Do we hear a second? Okay. Recommendation?
The Board of Selectmen recommends unanimously.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends unanimously.
Explanation?
This is the operating budget for the Septage Treatment Plant, which is treated as an enterprise fund. The costs are fully covered by fees charged to contractors that dispose of septic waste at the plant. This enterprise fund, like Gulf and water, is fully supported by the fee revenue.
Questions? Comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The article passes. Article Six.
Mr. Moderator?
Dan Horgan?
I'd move Article Six as printed in the warrant.
Seconded. Recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommend five zero.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends six zero.
Explanation?
This is the operating budget for the Wastewater Enterprise Fund. The costs are fully covered by the balance currently in the Wastewater Enterprise Fund account.
Any questions? Comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The article is passed. Article Seven, Pete, uh, who's going to do seven?
I am.
Mark Forrest.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article Seven as printed in the warrant.
Seconded. Recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends unanimously.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends unanimously.
Explanation?
Mr. Moderator, this is the operating budget for the Cable Television Communications Special Revenue Fund. This division will oversee cable television programming for the town government and will also direct all town communications. The costs are fully covered by the balance currently in the cable special, special revenue account.
Questions? Comments? Take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The article is, is passed. Article Eight will be presented by, I believe, David Flynn, or Joe, Joe Tierney?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town raise and appropriate the following amounts to fund the Dennis Yarmouth Regional School District budget for the fiscal 2024. Operating Budget FY24, $38,848,384. Capital Budget FY24, $2,153,969. The total certified budget
Do we have a second?
Second.
Recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommend?
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Explanation?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This, this budget that is presented tonight is an amendment from the budget that's in your, in the warrant that's printed. It is a lower amount. So hopefully people will be happy about that. I'm honored tonight to present the 2024 Dennis Yarmouth Regional School District Budget. I would like to also invite you all to our ribbon-cutting ceremony this Saturday at the new Dennis Yarmouth Intermediate Middle School in Station Ave. It'll start at 10:30. The school ambassadors will be giving tours, and you'll also be able to see this new state-of-the-art school. So if you take a look around in this auditorium here and you come on Saturday, totally different. It's beautiful, state-of-the-art, and it's, it's going to be beautiful. We have no formal presentation tonight except for the slides that are up here. Dave Flynn from our Assistant Superintendent for the Finance is here to answer any questions that you may have. This budget is also well under the 2.5%. So I'm also sad but humbled to say after 18 years of blood, sweat, and tears, our Superintendent Carol Woodbury will be retiring at the end of the school year. She created the D Y advantage. You saw some of that D Y advantage tonight. Throughout her tenure, she has completed the D Y High School renovation, of which we, we have two more payments on. Carol initiated full-day kindergarten for all, one of the first districts in the Cape to do so. Her staff and principals worked tirelessly to increase graduation rates, MCAS scores, and education initiatives. Her leadership on equity, diversity, inclusion is a work in progress, and the framework is there, ready for great success. She adapted, she adapted as our community became more diverse. She made sure every student counted. As the school leader, she has lived through some highs, like band championships, sports championships, including two Super Bowls championships. Completion of a new school, and mostly recently, the district was awarded the AP Access Award at the State House on April 5. This was the high school's project to expand access to AP courses, and this was led by Dr. Funk and Dale Foranoff. Carol has guided us with gentle hands and empathy through the lows. The sudden passing of two close friends and coworkers in the past three years would shake anyone to the core. Ken Jenks was Mr. D Y. He lived for the district. After his passing, Dr. Funk took up that role of bleeding green. Two short weeks ago, the news of the passing of Dr. Funk traveled quickly through the D Y pod. They will both be sorely missed like close flaming members. Carol, over in the corner, I think. On behalf of the D Y- On behalf of the DY School Committee, a parent of four successful DY graduates, and your friend, thank you for all you've done for the children of Dennis and Yarmouth over the past 18 years. You have helped over 3,600 young adults graduate and cross that finish line. You've been a great leader for our Dolphin Pod, and we all wish you well in your well-deserved retirement. Thank you.
I don't know if anyone has any questions on the budget.
All that being said, now we have to vote on our budget.
Are there any questions or comments about the budget? I also wanted to make a comment that the spirit of what's happened with the young people, the two young ladies that sang the National Anthem came direct from a track meet. And the members of the band also had some other after-school activities, including, I think, a baseball game and a golf match. So these young people are 24/7 involved in our community. And it goes against some perceptions, but it's the reality, so it's good stuff. So I guess the budget is on the table. All in favor? All opposed? The DY school budget passes. Article 9 will be presented, is for the Cape Cod Regional Tech, will be presented by Robert Sanborn, Superintendent, and Chris Greeley. I don't know how they want to do this, but...
I move Article 9 as presented, as printed in the warrant.
Do we have a second? Okay, recommendation?
The Board of Selectmen recommend by a vote of 5-0.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends unanimously.
Explanation?
Yes, I'm Christine Greeley, a school committee member for Cape Cod Regional Technical High School, and with me is our Superintendent of Schools, Robert Sanborn. Norm Michaud, who was unable to attend tonight, and I are the Yarmouth representatives to your vocational high school, Cape Cod Tech, located right off Route 6 at Exit 82 in Harwich. Superintendent Sanborn and I are here to present the FY24 budget assessment. The FY24 budget increase is 3.8% over last year's. However, with an increase of only one student from Yarmouth this year, coupled with additional local revenue, the operating assessment for this town has declined by 2.9% to $2,724,141, and the capital assessment has decreased by 3.8% to $1,325,533 for the 49 students from Yarmouth. Our mission is technical education with a priority on academic achievement to support our students and their goals, whether for career, college, or post-secondary training. We invite you to meet our chefs of tomorrow while lunching in our Cove Restaurant, visit our future cosmetologists in our salon, or using our auto technicians in training in our full-service automotive shop. We are educating and training dental and health technicians, carpenters, plumbers, electricians, and marine service and HVAC technicians for gainful living wage employment here on Cape Cod. This has been a year of major accomplishments in both state and national competitions. We would appreciate, we would especially like to recognize the achievements of our Yarmouth students this year.
Bob Sanborn, Superintendent, Cape Cod Tech. And before I share the Yarmouth student's success, I'd like to first congratulate my friend on a well-deserved retirement, Carol Woodbury, and also offer condolences on the passing of Dr. Funk to the DY family and the Funk family. I want to say that we are, you are ably, more than ably, represented by Chris Greeley and Norman Michaud on our school committee and also on our school-building committee, which is starting to wrap up, from Eric Tully and Nathan Ladley. And I also want to thank all the taxpayers, as I think we're in the fifth year of paying for the new school, and I invite you all to come up and see the place when you can. So the success, our Abigail, John and Abigail Adams Scholarship winners, all from Yarmouth, Kelsey Baker, Alessandra Cleary, Edward Clifford, Dalton Hoyt, Alexis James, Gianni Giacino, Dominic Labruzzo, Alyssa Norton, Alexander Pepe, Alexander Riker, Louisa Sette, Jacob Sturdivan, Jason White. Our... Chris Greeley assures me that all the parents, grandparents, and guardians really appreciate this, so bear with me. And I know you're all here for Cape Cod Tech tonight anyway, so... Student Journalist Award winners, Alex Blynn Conti, Kelsey Baker, Paloma Galzschneider, Charlotte Jones, Matthias Madruga, Alyssa Norton, Lindsay Payne, Louisa Sette, Anna Louisa Saurus, Jacob Sturdivan, Colin Thornton, Jean Lee Valerio Fernandez, and Julie Winell. Our National Technical Honors Society Yarmouth students are Nicholas Blynn Conti, Gianni Giacino, Aubrey Hool, Louisa Sette, Alyssa Norton, Naomi Maloney, Sabrine Marshu, Gavin Mumford, Jean Lee Valerio Fernandez, Adeline Burlingame, Philip Lima, Dante Lucchini, Matthias Pereira, Olivia Roundtree, Alana Thompson, Breckin Vera, and Cassandra Wells. On top of their academic education, students compete in contests in one of our 15 programs, and I want to share those with you. Gold Medal winners, Adeline Burlingame, Sabrine Marshu, and Kyle Milville, they had a gold medal, all had gold medals, silver medals, and it's what's called Skills USA, and that's in our 14 out of our 15 programs, I should say. Silver medals for Dalton Hoyt, Edward Peacock, and Jean Lee Valerio Fernandez, and bronze medal for Matthew Riker, and a state officer candidate, Naomi Maloney. And finally, they'll be going to the state and hopefully a competition in Marlboro this Friday and Saturday, and then national competition, hopefully, in Atlanta. Thank you once again, and back to Chris for a final.
This has been both an exciting year of student achievement, but also a year of extraordinary progress, as we're now using our new building. We invite you to learn more about us at www.capetech.us, and we invite interested townspeople to visit our new facility, which we view as not only a high school, but a community resource for our 12 towns. This has all been made possible by your past support, and we thank you in advance for this year's vote. If you have any questions, Bob and I are here.
Any questions? Comments? Hearing none? We'll take a vote. All in favor of Article 9, say aye. All opposed? The article carries. I should also comment that the comments I made about the DY students also apply to the Volk School students, particularly those from Yarmouth. I did tell Chris that next year we'll take bids for the music performances from the Volk School to compete with DY, so we've got some good stuff out there. Article 10?
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator, over here, to your right. Joe Tierney, School Committee, I'm sorry. I gave you folks a little bit of erroneous information about the ribbon-cutting. I'm so excited to have you guys come check the school out that I thought it was this Saturday, but it's Saturday the 6th.
May 6th.
So, May 6th, so you can change your, change the dates on your iPhones, and I hope to see everybody there. It's gonna be a great day. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Article 10, Dan Horgan?
Mr. Moderator, I'd move Article 10 as printed in the warrant.
Seconded. Recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommend 4-0.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends 5-0.
Explanation?
The Gulf Department capital expenses are related to maintenance obligations, which will provide better safety, prevent the need for more costly projects in the future, and allow for safer and more effective onsite equipment service. These capital expenses include replacement of a 2007 1-ton dump truck with plow, the second phase of the Bayberry Hill Clubhouse improvements, in which new flooring, bathrooms, patio improvements, and signage will be installed, and lastly, a five-year capital plan and sustainability plan that will further outline priorities, plans, schedules, for deferred capital items and environmentally friendly initiatives. The total for these improvements is $373,000, which will be funded from retained earnings through the Gulf Enterprise account. Therefore, property tax dollars are not necessary for these investments. The retained earnings account currently has $1,669,445 as a balance as of November 15, 2022.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? Seeing none? Hearing none? We'll take a vote. All in favor? All opposed? The motion carries. Article 11, presented by Dan Horgan?
Mr. Moderator, I'd move Article 11 as printed in the warrant.
Seconded. Recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommend 5-0.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends 6-0.
Explanation?
The Water Division capital expenses are related to maintenance obligations, which will provide better safety, prevent the need for more costly projects in the future, and increase effectiveness of the distribution system. The total for these improvements is $780,500, which will be funded from the available balance in the Water Special Revenue Account. Therefore, property tax dollars are not necessary for these investments. The Water Special Revenue Account currently has $1.67 million as a balance.
Questions? Comments? Hearing none? Seeing none? Take a vote. All in favor of Article 11? Say aye. Opposed? The article carries unanimously. Article 12, presented by Selectman Chairman Mike Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move Article 12 as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation?
Board recommends 4-0.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends 6-0.
Did we hear a second? Okay, thanks. Explanation?
The Water Division proposes to replace this section of aging water infrastructure to prevent water shut-offs and water quality concerns due to water main breaks. Much of the water main on Route 28, excuse me, has reached the end of its useful life and experiences leaks or breaks several times per year, resulting in disruptions to both our water customers and travelers of Route 28. Areas where the main has not reached the end of its useful life will be maintained, but double mains in those areas will be eliminated. New mains will be properly sized for the fire flow needs and provide additional valving to minimize water customer disruptions in the future. The project includes approximately 4.8 miles of new water main on Route 28. The funds to repay this debt will be from the Water Department revenues.
Any questions or comments about Article 12?
Good evening. I'm Manjolo Lukasi, 5 Cadet Lane in Englewood Section of Yarmouth. I have a question, or a couple of questions, actually. Exactly how old are the water mains that you're discussing on Route 28?
Mr. Colby, Jeff Colby can answer that question. I think the answer is very old, but...
Yes, Jeff Colby, Public Works Director. They're in excess of 70 years old and at the end of their useful life.
My second question is, are these water mains gonna be replaced with actual new piping, or is it going to be sleeved?
It will be actual new piping at the same time as the sewer work is occurring, so as to minimize disruption by replacing the lines.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none? Seeing none? Take a vote. All in favor of Article 12? Say aye. Hold up your cards. Aye. This is a 2/3rd vote. All opposed? The article carries by a 2/3rd vote. Article 13, presented by Dan Horgan?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd move Article 13 as printed in the warrant.
Seconded. Recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommend 4-0.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends 6-0.
Explanation? This is also, by the way, a 2/3rd vote.
This article includes capital funding for the Water Division to fund Phase 3 of the water pumping and treatment building rehabilitation. Improvements include roofing and trim replacements, HVAC repair and replacement, interior painting, and other necessary improvements to the building envelopes to improve their safety and security of the water supply facilities. The funds to repay this debt will be from the Water Department reserves.
Any questions or comments on Article 13? Hearing none? Seeing none? Take a vote. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries by a 2/3rd vote. Article 14, presented by Dan Horgan?
Mr. Moderator, I'd move Article 14 as printed in the warrant.
Article's been seconded. Recommendation?
Selectmen recommend 4-0.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends 6-0.
Explanation?
The Septage capital expenses include roof replacements on the office area and garage bays, as well as improvements to the roof and metal building over the sludge storage area. The funds will also provide for the rehabilitation of one of the two-belt filter presses at the facility. The total for these improvements is $675,000, which will result from the available balance in the Septage Enterprise account. Therefore, property tax dollars are not necessary for these investments. The Septage Enterprise account currently has a $4.87 million reserve balance.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? All in favor of Article 14? Say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Article 15?
I have that, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, I'd move Article 15 as printed in the warrant.
Seconded. Recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommend 5-0.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends 6-0.
Explanation?
Fire department vehicles and life safety equipment are funded by the ambulance revenue. This article supports the repayment to the stabilization for Engine 42, which was purchased back in 2021.
Any questions? Comments about Article 15? Hearing none? All in favor? Opposed? The article carries. Article 16? Will that be Dan?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 16 as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends in favor, 4-0.
Finance Committee recommends 6-0.
Did I hear a second? I just need to hear a second again. Okay, it was seconded. Okay, explanation?
This article funds the proposed FY 2024 capital improvement program and miscellaneous transfers from free cash to support town operations.
Questions? Comments? Questions, comments? Yes, sir. Go ahead, Norm.
Good evening. Norm Holcomb. I have a question about the capital in that we're seeing over $3 million funded from free cash. Pre-COVID, how much of the capital, including the... Including the $1,004 of roadway improvements, how much of that was funded from regular taxes as part of the general fund?
Mr. Rittenhour.
The amount that was provided from the normal tax levy in previous years has only been for the roadway improvements, which was the subject of a $1.1 million override that occurred in a previous year. And these items here are outside of the levy. I think there was, in previous years, up to a million or so that was also from the property tax levy, which were, you know, moving to restore some of those funds. We've taken the first steps of restoring. All of these items were from free cash two years ago, and we've started the process. We've restored the roadway improvements, have been returned to the property tax levy, and we're going to work in the future to restore as many of the other capital items inside the levy as possible. But currently being right at Prop. 2.5 levy limit, we were able to put back the roadway improvements, but not all of the rest of the improvements.
So then, in order to get back to where we were pre-COVID, we would have to raise general taxes by a $1,004 at this point?
Or reprogram additional funds.
I'm sorry?
Or reprogram additional funds. It's not an automatic tax increase. No one's proposed that.
I see. Okay. All right, thank you. Over here?
Yes, ma'am.
Giallo, Precinct 7. Item number 20, the Riverwork Park. I'd just like Community Development to explain that this is not only $500,000 out of free cash, but Article 32, it is $3 million out of CPA funds. Article 33 is $3 million bond, and I'd like an explanation for the public because this will affect CPA funds over a 10-year period. So if they could explain how this bond is going to affect everything. So this is a $6 million, $500,000 project, not just the $500,000 in free cash. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a question, or you just want...
I understand Community Development has a presentation to explain how this is going to impact.
Okay, there will be something coming up about that.
Yes, thank you.
That will be addressed. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Did somebody turn... Okay, Susan Starkey, Precinct 1. I'm curious from our Town Administrator or Assistant Administrator about the vehicles that are being purchased here. Are they using community, green community funds to become hybrid or electric? And is any place in this budget, are we talking about the impact or the savings that we've received because we're a green community? But particularly about the vehicles.
Yes, I'd like to address that, that the vehicles, our hybrid vehicles primarily that we have throughout the capital improvement program. And I would also point out that we start the list with, we're on year two of the replacement cruisers for the police department, and those are hybrid cruisers. And in addition to the funds that have been provided by the town, the town received an additional competitive grant to underwrite a portion of those energy-efficient vehicles for the police department.
Okay.
Wonderful.
Thank you. It's on, yeah, I can see the red light.
I didn't break it. It's on. Can you hear me?
It's on, yeah, go ahead.
There we go. Number 36, is it? I'm looking at?
No, there's no 86.
No, 30. Climate Change Vulnerability Study. Can you define what climate change is and the vulnerability study? I'd like to know what climate change really means, because no one seems to ever define it.
The primary impact, and I'd like to answer that question, the primary impacts that we're talking about in our lovely seaside community involve the impacts of sea level rise on our public ways to water. And we have a very active municipal vulnerability planning program in place. We've received grant funding for this, and we're developing a detailed plan that is fundable, the projects to combat that loss of public facilities through the sea level rise and erosion. There's federal and state money that we're applying, but you need to have the vulnerability studies in place to be eligible for those. And what this does is it augments the additional funding that we've received, not only from the town, but also from grants in the past to expand the Department of Natural Resources' ability to include the coastal public access resources that are threatened by sea level rise in our vulnerability assessment program, thereby making them eligible to receive some of these grants. And, you know, I don't want to get into the climate change debate with you, but I am here to tell you that the sea level issues that we've confronted, and we could take you on a tour, have been many and are getting worse.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. I have, I think, two mundane questions. Item number, line item 32, I believe this would be the line item to ask the question on. Is this going to address the parking lot to the tennis courts on Regional Avenue?
Sir, before, could you identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Barry Kleiman, 90 Beacon Street, Precinct 4.
Okay, thank you. Carol, you want to answer the puddles?
It's not the parking lot, it is the lower tennis courts.
But is, well, is there another line item for tennis courts? I thought there was one that will, will it, will...
Correct, right.
Will that parking lot at the tennis courts on Regional Avenue ever be addressed?
I happen to know how this works, but I'm not...
Nothing in there for the parking lots. This is just the tennis courts, the lower tennis courts across the street from the...
Well, okay, that's a shame. Item 22, the bathrooms at the senior center. I think it's a shame that the seniors have to have difficulty in finding a working bathroom in the senior center. So I certainly hope this money will be approved and will be expended to get those bathrooms working in proper order. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hank Eishem. I have a question, number one, replacing the cruisers, the police cruisers. And then, next article, number 17, is renting or leasing police vehicles. Are they doing both? And I'm all for having the right equipment for them. I'm just curious why there's two different ways of purchasing them.
Bill Scott, Assistant Town Administrator. There are overlapping financing plans that we use. So last town meeting, we, the town approved the financing plan for the item that's at the top of that list. And the next series of financed cruisers are in the next article. So the financing requires approval by a town meeting. That's why you see Article 17 requesting approval for the financing plan. And then, because the prior financing plan was approved, we're able to move ahead with the article embedded in the capital improvements list for the $88,000. So there's overlapping sort of acquisitions of the cruisers. 17 represents the approval of financing plan for the next cycle, and the one in the list is from the cycle that's already ongoing.
So they've already been purchased for number one?
No, they haven't purchased it. It's just that when you allocate the funds each year, despite the fact that the financing plan was approved, you still have to request authorization for those funds.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, Article 16, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The article passes. Article 17, which I think will answer some questions. Article 17 is...
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 17 as printed in the warrant.
Seconded, okay, recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommend 5-0.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee also recommends 5-0.
Explanation?
The Yarmouth Police Department would like to enter into a four-year finance agreement with Ford Motor Company for the purchase of six police cruisers. At the last annual town meeting, voters approved the first lease agreement to allow the department to replace cruisers at the end of their useful service life. The second agreement continues to provide minimal impact to the capital budget fund. This will reduce costly repairs to several aging vehicles used daily for patrol and administrative functions. All the vehicles scheduled for replacement are no longer under warranty. At the termination of the lease term, the town assumes ownership of the vehicles.
Questions, comments? We have a question. Take your time.
Angelo Lucazi, 5 Cadet Lane. On this cruiser financing, is that applied to a leased vehicle?
Yes, sir. These vehicles are leased, but it's different than your normal vehicle lease that an average citizen would get. This is a leased-to-own program. It's a way of spreading out the payments for the purchase of the vehicles.
I understand that, but I also understand that many police vehicles are adapted with certain, like in the old days, interceptor motors, carburetors, you know, speed control, as well as computer systems. To me, the $96,000 or $97,000 around it off seems real inexpensive for six vehicles equipped thusly.
Well, thank you.
We got a good deal.
But does that include the equipment needed by the police cruisers?
Yes, these are fully equipped vehicles, and they do use some of the vehicles' equipment that are possible from the old vehicles. And the key thing to keep in mind, I think that this is one of the big improvements that we've made in the capital planning for the town. We used to have a situation where, you know, we'd have maybe six or 12 cars every couple of years, and it would go $0.00, you know, $350,000. And it's very difficult to manage that way. And by having the lease to own, the payments stay lower, but we can depend on them on an annual basis. And also, we split the vehicles into groupings so we don't have the same year vehicles with all of the vehicles, because there's a lot of technology improvements in the hybrids.
So it's a special, like, municipal program with Ford Motor Company?
Exactly, sir. And we take advantage of that along with other communities around the Commonwealth.
At the end of the lease, excuse me, at the end of the lease, would you have to assume ownership, and would it be an extra expense?
No, it will not be an extra expense. What happens, at the end of the lease, another group of vehicles, you know, comes in new. And when these vehicles, it's a circular system, after four years, they're traded in, and the town gets the value of those vehicles that lowers the next lease. So it helps to do that.
Thank you for your explanation.
Okay, thank you. Last Ford I had was a Pinto, so... These guys know what they're doing. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Carries on a two-thirds vote. Article 18, Chairman Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think that longtime town meeting members will appreciate this comment. Looking out at the number of people I see in the audience tonight and not seeing on the warrant anything about guns and motorcycles, this may, in fact, be the main article of this evening's meeting. I move Article 18 as printed in the warrant.
I gotta read it.
Mr. Chairman? You have to read the motion.
Moved at the town...
Does he need to read the whole motion?
This here?
If people have it in front of them, I don't know.
No, I'm not gonna...
The bonding motion?
That is the motion. In the explanation, I will be incorporating the rest of that.
Okay.
Which printed in red.
Recommendation?
The recommendation is four in favor, zero against, by the Board of Selectmen.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends 6-0.
Explanation?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We're here to discuss the creation of a wastewater treatment system to improve and protect the environment and the water quality in our town. This project has been a long time in coming, and it will help protect the future of our community. We're going to hear a brief presentation from our Public Works Director, Jeff Colby, and our Town Administrator, Robert Rittenhour, that will cover essentially three major areas. One, why we need this project. Two, the specifics of what the project entails. And three, the costs to individual homeowners. Following the presentation, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to recognize Joanne Crowley, Chair of the Planning Board, Ed Hoops, Chair of the Conservation Commission, and Stephanie Cox, Chair of the Finance Committee, for some brief remarks. As I stated at the opening of the meeting, as we discussed this matter, we ask that the voters please consider the cost impacts to the town and its residents of not moving forward with this article, and that this particular consideration deserves some careful consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Colby?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, Jeff Colby, your Public Works Director. This will be a brief overview of this critically important project.
Jeff, a little closer.
How's that, a little closer? All right, again, Jeff Colby, your Public Works Director, just a brief overview of this critically important project. How's that?
It's good.
All right, just a brief overview of this critically important project. Because of the lack of effective wastewater infrastructure and a 722% increase in population between 1951 and 2010 has led to environmental... between 1951 and 2010 has led to environmental deterioration due to nitrogen pollution. Nitrogen pollution is primarily caused by reliance on septic systems to handle our waste. And the graphic you see on the screen before you demonstrates that population growth. Next slide, please. The average removal of nitrogen is 96% required in Parker River watershed, 80% required in Lewis Bay watershed, and almost 60% in the Bass River watershed. That's necessary to meet water quality standards and removing of that septic system nitrogen in each one of those impaired embayments. Next slide, please. The purpose of this project is to reduce nitrogen loading in rivers, bays, and harbors through the discontinuation of onsite septic systems in portions of Yarmouth. Removal of the potential threat to drinking water quality, and also to protect sensitive resource areas such as shellfish and indigenous plant species. Another benefit is it will revitalize the Route 28 corridor and Yarmouth's overall economy. Next slide, please. You've probably all heard or are hearing about some proposed DEP regulations. And this project will avoid the need for innovative alternative septic systems on individual properties within Yarmouth. The DEP regulations are requiring that even fully functioning Title V systems be replaced with an innovative alternative system. These are also known as nitrogen removal systems, because they do remove some nitrogen, just not enough to effectively address our water quality standards that I mentioned in a previous slide. The estimated average installation for one of these innovative alternative septic systems is in excess of $50,000 per property, and that's just for the installation. The operational costs are in excess of $2,500 every year. You have to have your system tested by licensed wastewater professionals. So the key here is that this watershed permit that the town can apply for through DEP will avoid property owners having to upgrade their septic systems unnecessarily. Next slide, please. This is important components here as well. This mass DEP has fully approved Yarmouth's wastewater plan, and we're actually ranked number one to receive state funding. That's going to include 0% loans and debt forgiveness of our project costs. Next slide, please. So this is what Phase 1 looks like. This is the subject of this article that you're voting on for $207 million. It is everything that's shown in orange on this slide here. It's essentially the Route 28 corridor from the Barnstable Town Line to the Dennis Town Line, Old Main Street, and the South Shore Drive. We're calling this the backbone of our system. These pipes in the road are necessary for all the future phases to flow into, to collect the wastewater, that will then be pumped to the treatment facility at 99 Buck Island Road, kind of in that center of your screen where it's shown as a black box that says "Treatment Plant." We have two bids in hand for two of the six contracts needed to complete this work, and that means that if it proves tonight, construction can begin on September of this year, with an estimated completion timeframe of June of 2026, moving quickly to take advantage of cost-effective construction before costs escalate anymore. Next slide, please. So the overall plan is an eight-phase plan, one phase every five years, which you're voting on tonight, again, to be clear, is for Phase 1. But we will continue, need to continue to show progress on the future phases, 2 through 8, which are approximately one every five years for an overall 40-year plan, to, again, address the water quality needs within the town of Yarmouth. That's what this map shows. You can see that the bottom two-thirds of that graphic is the areas within Yarmouth that need to be treated, that need to be sewed in order to deal with our water quality standards. And with that said, I'd like to turn it over to our Town Administrator, Bob Rittenhour, to talk about some of the financial components of the plan.
Thank you, Jeff. In addition, obviously, to all of the engineering and design that's gone into this project, we've spent a great deal of time trying to develop an integrated financial management plan for the sole purpose of driving down the costs as much as we possibly could for each individual resident and property owner. And I'll talk a little bit about our model, but the key point in putting together this model is we've been able to develop a financing plan that does not include a general property tax increase for any of the residents in the town. And what that means specifically is that all of the costs for this Phase 1 project, and if we could get that Phase 1 map back up again, I'd like to underscore this point. All of the costs in this project, we're going to hear about the charges, the betterments, the O&amp;M, all of those costs will be within the Phase 1 zone. So there will be no betterments, no charges, no taxes for Phase 1 to anyone that is not specifically on a parcel that's in that gold area. Other folks will participate over the 40-year program as we matriculate through the additional phases. But anyone who's not in Phase 1 will not receive a bill for Phase 1. Now, let's go back to the pie chart just a little bit, and I'd like to show you and get to some specifics quickly, if I could, regarding what costs will be to those folks that are in that Phase 1 zone. And also, in terms of how we're able to avoid a property tax increase for a number this large, it really focuses on identifying other financing sources. And one of the key areas I want to point out that's in that gray area, over 43% of these costs have been through the use of tourism-related funds, specifically through the short-term rental taxes that the town receives. We've got a big pie chart for the town's own short-term rental taxes that we receive from tourists to the community, but also that Cape Cod Trust. That's the Water Protection Trust that's funded entirely from short-term rental taxes that is paid through tourism. So what that does is, between that and some of the other funding sources outside of property taxes, it really shrinks down those portions of the pie that we have to fund through local residents. And as you can see, there's two primary pieces of the pie. There's a betterment piece that has been limited to 14.6. We were talking about 15% of the overall project. And then there's the O&amp;M surcharge that is 14.2%. And I'd like to move to the next slide and show you what is this going to cost for the typical residential property owner in Phase 1. Through the betterment program, we've been able to take advantage of last year's vote that extended a 30-year payback period, combined with tonight's vote that would limit betterment interest to individual residents down to between 0 and 2%. With that, we have it estimated that a single-family home in this project will receive a betterment of $15,000, which can be funded, we're hoping at the 0% over the 30-year period. And if the entire amount is placed on the betterment, which goes on your property taxes, it's about $510 annually. That's the annual capital cost to each residence. Now, the second key item, we're going to have a new thing that is going to be a wastewater bill. And that pays for the operation and maintenance of the treatment facility, of the actual treatment of the waste. And we've calculated, we have the water flow data that we've based this on, and we have already projected rates established, and it's an average of $700 per year for a single-family home. That's going to be the cost of the new water bill, that'll be the treatment of all of your waste. It will no longer sit underneath your yard. And that includes, that 700 includes a capital surcharge that also helps to pay for the infrastructure. And the last three-part of the stool that local residents will be responsible for is there's a one-time connection cost that we'll be providing, the stub is close to the line for your septic system for every property along the route. And we estimate a single-family home will have a charge of between $8,000 and $10,000, which includes all of the engineering and construction to both connect to the wastewater system and to render inoperable the septic system that's in place by filling it with sand and burying it. It does not need to be removed. And that connection cost, we're also working with the county that has rebranded its former septic loan program to the new Aqua Fund that is offering low-interest loans that start at 0% over a 20-year period that would cover the costs of the connection. So those are the three costs that people will have to deal with. No more pumping out your system. And I'd like to go to the next slide as well. And it's been talked about, what is the cost of voting? Now, we know that the DEP has proposed these new regulations, that if the town is not able to show advancement on this subject through this adoption, that those new regulations require each individual home to install their own innovative and alternative nitrogen-removing septic system. And the systems that the DEP is approving, right now, in today's dollars, have a cost of $50,000 each. That will be the responsibility solely of the individual homeowner. The town is not allowed to finance those. The 0% loans that we're getting through the state to fund the wastewater system, we're not eligible for this type of work for that. And again, Jeff mentioned, and I do want to underscore, that those systems, once you install them, cost roughly $2,500 per year just to operate, which is more than the cost of the betterment and the cost of the sewer bill combined. So we feel that this collective system, by using the town's power to leverage all of our resources together to get this treatment moving forward, is a tremendous value to individual residents, and that if we take the go-it-alone approach, that it's going to be very costly to folks.
Thank you. And I believe there were two other speakers wanting to speak. Joanne?
Joanne Crowley, Chair of the Yarmouth Planning Board. The Yarmouth Planning Board has reviewed the content and purpose of this particular article, and we unanimously support it. This investment to revitalize one of our most important commercial corridors, Route 28, is a wise one, and it will allow a tremendous opportunity for us to look at that corridor in a smart and thoughtful way in the future as we look to develop and make it a better transportation corridor for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Cox, Chair of the Finance Committee?
Actually, Mr. Moderator, I believe Ed Hoops, the Chairman of the Conservation Commission, was next.
Ed Hoops, the Chairman of Conservation.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, Eleanor Laurent, I'm the Vice Chair of the Conservation Commission. Ed Hoops has a prior arrangement that he couldn't make it for, so I will be speaking.
Let's go a little closer.
I will be speaking in his place. On behalf of the Yarmouth Conservation Commission, I urge the voters of Yarmouth at this meeting to vote yes on 18. The water quality, both fresh and saltwater systems, has declined drastically in the past decades. The Association to Preserve Cape Cod 2022 State of the Waters Report found water quality is roughly one-third of the Cape's ponds evaluated as adversely impacted. And all of the saltwater embayments on the Antucket Sound that were evaluated in 2022 received an unacceptable grade. The good news is the poor water quality is something we can improve on, and we all have the vital interest in improving the water quality here in Yarmouth and throughout Cape Cod. This article may not be glamorous, and it will cost us all money, but the way to improve the water quality starts here. This article does not pass. Think about what it will mean, not just for the current residents, but for the overall health and beauty that has drawn us all to reside in Yarmouth and Cape Cod. If you live here year-round, or only for the month of August, and you wish to be able to enjoy the beauty and resources in doing so, you then need to support this article. The Commission asks you to improve the water quality and future quality of life here on Cape Cod and the town for all of us by voting yes on this article. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Stephanie Cox, Chair of the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee unanimously supports this article. As I mentioned previously, you can see our position laid out in our Finance Committee report, page 1 of your warrant, which I won't bother reading, but I will highlight a couple of things. You know, the state is serious, they mean business, when they say they are going to force us to take action. And I don't want to make the state out to be the bad guy here. Their position is reasonable in that they're saying that we cannot continue to dig a hole in the ground and put our waste in it, like we've done for the last 400 years. We need to have appropriate infrastructure, and we need to clean that up. So the state is going to make property owners yourselves pay for this. What the town of Yarmouth is doing is saving you money. This approach, not only does it have an incredible model that's very creative, tapping other people's money, visitors who come here in short-term rentals, as well as business owners who are along Route 28, for the biggest cost when you're building a sewer system, which is the treatment facility. We are using other people's money, which in my mind is a no-brainer. And the business corridor along Route 28, by having that sewered, will allow for economic growth, so that, you know, I know a lot of you don't come to every town meeting. I hope that that will change. You will come to everyone in the future. But, you know, we at the Finance Committee, you know, year over year, we have to look at increasing costs just to run the town that are part of the cost of doing business. And as long as we don't grow our tax base, and it continues, our commercial tax base, and it continues to shrink, that means that we keep having to come back to you. And you have to choose between, you know, properly funding, you know, police and fire and other services, or taxing yourselves more. We don't want you to have to make that choice. So by making sure we sewer appropriately along Route 28, we will allow our commercial tax base to grow, which grows the pot, which means that the pressure comes off of you a bit. So I hope that you will support the article, and we can begin to address something that we have long, as a community, as Cape Codders, ignored, and to our detriment. We want to be able to have, the reason that we all live here is the environment, and this will allow us to clean it up. One final thought I just want for the individual homeowners, as we took a look at this, one of the important pieces for you all to bear in mind, is if you are forced by DEP to do an IA system, you will have to, when you, if you were to sell your home later on down the line, you're going to have to pay off that loan to pay that off at the time of sale. That could affect your plans for what you're going to do with that money. Whereas with a betterment, you transfer that to the next property owner. And one final thing is, we are, you know, we are seeing new contaminants coming up with PFOS and PFOA and other things coming up. So with a centralized treatment plant, you don't have to address that on the site in your backyard. We can address it, Jeff Colby can address it, on the back end with the treatment plant. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Stephanie. Due to the significance and scope of this article, we're going to ask Chairman Stone to read the entire motion for the benefit of the audience and the public.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Chairman, can I speak, please?
I'm not a chairman.
Can you hold your question? You'll be the first, you're first in line.
Mr. Moderator, I may have, I not only may have, I believe I misspoke when I said I moved the article. What I meant to say is I moved the motion as printed in the warrant, which starts at the bottom of page 24 and goes through a good part of page 25. Town Council advises that it would be prudent to make it very clear by reading the motion itself into the record. So my motion is as follows. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $207,244,000 to implement Phase 1 of the Town of Yarmouth Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan Notice of Project Change approved by the Massachusetts Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs in a Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act Certificate dated September 30, 2022, consisting of construction of a municipal water resource recovery facility and sewers and associated pumping stations along Route 28, South Shore Drive, Old Main Street, and adjacent areas, as more fully described in said Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, including any land acquisition costs and all other costs incidental and related thereto, collectively referred to as the project. That to meet, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, to borrow such sum under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 8, under paragraph 14 of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, that the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amount from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, herein after referred to as the trust, established pursuant to Chapter 29(c) and in connection therewith, to enter into a financing agreement and/or security agreement with the trust, and otherwise to contract with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection, herein after referred to as DEP, with respect to such loan, and that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with the DEP, that the Board of Selectmen and/or town administrator is authorized to apply for, accept, and expend any federal, state, county, or other funds that may be available for this purpose, and to enter into any intermunicipal and other agreements, or and/or other agreements, for acceptance of any such grants or funds which shall be used to offset the total appropriation authorized herein. Excuse me. That the Board of Selectmen is authorized for purposes of the project to acquire through all legal means, including donation, purchase in eminent domain, and assign to any such other appropriate governmental entities and public utility companies the rights and land parcels constituting any portion of the land premises, permanent or temporary easements, rights of way, and other rights and land in Yarmouth necessary for the construction of said wastewater collection and conveyance system, as shown on plans entitled Yarmouth Recommended Plan Phase 1 Contracts dated January 2023 and prepared by CDM Smith, and plan entitled Town of Yarmouth Wastewater Collection and Water Resource Recovery Facilities Phase 1 dated March 2023 and prepared by CDM Smith, copies of which are on file with the town clerk, and as may be amended, or take any other action relative thereto.
Second.
Motion has been made officially and seconded. I think now we're ready for questions or comments. Sir?
Albert Dunn, 25 Debbs Hill Road. Several years ago, another group tried to pass this sewer for Route 28. And then the reason, the main reason it did not pass, because they said not every homeowner would be tied up to the sewer system. Is this still true? Are all homeowners liable to be tied up to the system?
Mr. Colby?
Yes, Jeff Colby, Public Works Director, again. Approximately 2/3 of the community, to meet the water quality standards I covered real quickly, would need to be tied into the current sewer system. So approximately 2/3.
You mean that 2/3 will be tied up and 1/3 won't be, but will pay for it?
Approximately 1/3 won't be under this plan, but I would suggest, based upon what the town administrator covered, the payment is not direct. This is a different plan than was proposed in 2011, where essentially the program was on the tax rate. This is a much more creative financing program where there's no tax rate impact.
Well, okay, there's only going to be 2/3 in this group. Will all the homeowners be subject to this expense, even though ones who are not going to be tied in?
I'd like to address that, sir, right up here. The answer, the answer is no. Folks that are not tied up to the system will not be charged. What we're talking about at this point, Phase 1, are those properties in the orange. If you don't live in one of those lots, in that orange right there, you're not going to be connected, you're not going to receive any bill, any charges. You will benefit in a cleaner environment and cleaned-up water resources.
So you're saying if we're not tied up, we will, all homeowners will not have to pay?
No, sir, they will not.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I'll go here. Gentlemen?
Hello, Angela Lucasi, 5 Cadet Lane. I'm all in favor of this, and I have probably an obvious question. The excess of nitrogen, is that caused by fertilization of lawns?
Jeff, right behind you, he's the expert.
Sorry. There is a component related to nitrogen pollution that's fertilizer, but that's only approximately 7% of that over-fertilization of the waterways. 85% is from septic systems. So that's the lion's share of what we're trying to address here, is through elimination of septic systems.
Thank you. I'll go up there. Ma'am?
Peter Morris, Precinct 1. I'd like some clarification, especially with regard to the work that has to be done to clean up the Bass River and the Lewis Bay areas. I think I saw somewhere in the slides that that is, that work is supposed to occur during Phase 1. Is that correct?
We'll get back to you. Jeff?
The good part about the plan that you've seen before you tonight is it addresses, in part, all three of our impacted embayments, because it stretches across the entire town on Route 28. So it does help in Lewis Bay, it does help improvements in Parker's River, as well as Bass River.
Now, the reason I ask about the two Bass River and Lewis Bay, because we have to deal with our neighbors. I mean, that's the basis of my question. How are we going to deal with our neighbors and this whole cleanup matter? I mean, you can draw a line or something in the water and say, we'll clean up our side, and you do whatever you want to do. There has to be some kind of a plan to cooperate, I guess. The thing is, I was in town hall yesterday, and a gentleman approached me. He was from the Bass River, Friends of Bass River, I guess. And he started telling me that he's been meeting with people in Dennis, some committees or groups like the Friends of Bass River, or something like that in Dennis, and, you know, having conversations with them about this. So I'd like to have some clarification exactly how the Friends of Bass River, what kind of relationship they have within this humongous project here, for example.
What I can say with regard to working with our neighbors, we will need a watershed agreement with both Dennis as well as Barnstable on what portion of those shared water bodies, in the case of Barnstable, it's Lewis Bay, in the case of Dennis, it's Bass River, which portions, in percentages, we will be addressing to work together. So we both have a portion of those water bodies that we're responsible for. This will begin to address the portions Yarmouth's responsible for, but we will have to have a formal agreement with those two communities about cleaning up those shared water bodies.
But when is that going to occur? When do the agreements occur? After we start the work, or what? I would like a better explanation exactly. And I think, considering our history with the town of Dennis, not only with the school district, but also, I think, with this very subject matter, when the tri-town group there, I think we have to have some third party or somebody to oversee any kind of negotiations and agreements that will have to come as a result. Thank you.
Sir?
John Henderson, Precinct 1, Yarmouth Port. With regard to the revenues, which are going to be received to finance the debt service, based upon the Phase 1 wastewater funding program recommendations from December of 2022, which basically the numbers match what was in the pie chart up there now. Rounding off, the annual debt service is expected to be about $7 million, and the total funding is expected to be about $7.5 million. Now, the revenues, are those secured for the 30-year period of the debt service, or are they open? Any of those open?
They are secure revenues for the entire length of the debt.
Okay. And if there are cost overruns, the surplus is projected to be $500,000 per year. If there are cost overruns and we go into a deficit, how will that amount be funded? Will it go to free cash, or will it be, go to the tax base?
No, we have no intention of having, of having cost overruns be transferred to the rest of the community. We've portioned out the model over the 30-year period, and one of the key items that we're doing is pre-funding this program so that we can initiate it with a surplus in the bank. And in the event that any given year doesn't 100% match in terms of, say, if there's a lot of water conservation and the revenues don't come in exactly as we forecast them, you know, 20 years hence, we have sufficient funds that are pre-funding that wastewater enterprise, such that all of the costs for this system will be from the Enterprise Fund.
Okay, so an Enterprise Fund will be set up to handle all of these
Yes.
expenditures and receipts. Okay. So if this plan is adopted, then will the $50,000 IA project be canceled for everybody in town, or just for the people that are covered by the various phases of the program?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for answering that question. You know, that is a critical point. What we are leveraging here is by initiating this Phase 1 and fulfilling our obligations under this Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan that we have approved, this will make it so no one in the town will be forced to install these IA systems, as long as we continue matriculating our way through the program. Okay?
Very good.
Thank you. Well, sir?
Just one more question, if I could. There was mention that we're hoping to get a 0% financing arrangement for the debt service. Is that secured, or do we have to apply for that? What is the standing of that currently?
The town has made application for 0% financing, and we've just recently received the final state-approved, it's called an Intended Use Plan. It's the list of projects that the state approves. The town of Yarmouth is number one as a priority on that list in the entire Commonwealth.
I'd like to thank the board and the town employees for all the hard work that they put into this.
Thank you.
Precinct 8. My question is, in the article, it mentions eminent domain, which is a very strong power. And the selectmen are asking us to grant them eminent domain, but they're not specifying whose home, whose business, whose property they're going to be taking away tonight. And I think, you know, we should know upfront what we're all voting for here, not just be granting a general power to the selectmen to, you know, take anyone's property away. Can somebody please address that?
Jeff, I'll get to you next, sir, so Jeff doesn't have.
There are very limited easements that are needed for this project, primarily related to pump stations. We've had discussions with the affected homeowners already. And what I will say is, as was read earlier, those plans are on file with the town clerk, but there's very limited need for easements. There's also a requirement under the State Revolving Fund that we have very specific language in this article that you're approving tonight, and that language matches what they require. Sir?
Mr. Moderator, could I add to that, please? To that explanation, just briefly. When people think of eminent domain, they think of a taking, where the town actually goes out and acquires someone else's property. And certainly, there are those types of takings. What Mr. Colby was speaking about were easements, where the town may need to exercise dominion over a portion of someone's property for a limited amount of time. Those are still considered takings.
Thanks for the clarification. Sir?
Okay, I'm all for this, and I'm wondering why. I purchased my property in West Yarmouth 16 years ago, and they've been talking about this since then. I have a couple of observations and some questions. My first observation is, why is the Commonwealth of Massachusetts making us number one? Are we the worst in the state? Years ago, I've heard about sewer projects, and they would say, oh, it'd be $5,000 to $8,000 to hook up to it. I grew up with Fred Lasky, who's the commissioner of the MWRA, and it's a whole different ballgame over there than the MWRA watershed. I have a question with this flyer correspondence you sent about Article 18 wastewater, everything you wanted to know about it. On the back of the sheet, it says, "Single-family home with up to three bedrooms," which is like my home, "will be $510 annually." I saw a chart earlier that had also a betterment fee. Would that be an annual cost as well in addition to the hookup costs?
No, sir. That was the betterment fee.
That is the betterment.
So it's one and the same.
But you say operation and maintenance sewer bill.
Correct. There's your three.
$700 annually.
There's your three.
$510, so it's going to be $1,210 annually for the three-bedroom homeowner. Is that correct?
Plus the connection, yes.
Plus the connection.
Yes, those are the, those are the costs.
Okay, in the MWRA, you have a water bill for delivery service, and you have a sewer bill, and that's it. I was just wondering what the differences were. Thank you.
Sir?
Tom Sullivan, Precinct One. I've got several questions. One is, what type of environment, I'm referring to the sewage treatment plant to be built on Buck Island Road. What type of environmental studies have been done on the land down there, any particular endangered species? I know for a fact that coyotes live down there, and there's red-tailed hawk, both protected species. We had an incident recently when the school started. All the trees to the right of the administration building were taken down. Endangered species, red-tailed hawks were flying around for days looking for their nest. Two, part two on that would be, has there been any water flow studies done in that area? With the treatment plant, they're going to be putting water into the ground there. And that is an area very susceptible to Swan Pond, Parker's River. Many years ago, the sewage treatment plant, which aerates behind the water department, was aerating, apparently overdosed on nitrogen. It went into the, what they actually call an underground river, into Swan Pond. We had a huge fish kill, thousands of dead stripers, right in that pond. At the selectmen at the time didn't want to make a comment about it, but they knew they were responsible for it. I'm a fisherman. So I know it is. So these are the studies, have they been completed? Because I think we might be putting a cart before the horse here. It's in a very, there's cranberry bogs out there. All right? The other thing I would like to address is the sewer department. Hasn't been discussed. Once you start this sewer treatment plant, you're going to have to have a sewer department, and you're going to have to hire people, a director, employees for a 24-hour operation. That hasn't been discussed. It says, well, this part here won't affect our tax rate. Well, hiring employees at union wages and stuff, benefits included, is going to go in the tax levy, and that affects your tax rate. So that's not upfront. They haven't said anything about this. And the third part that I would like to do, the first gentleman about answering about who might be not hooking up to the system. Any home that's above north of 6A is not going to be hooked up, and that's a question I think the town needs to answer. Because Cape Cod Bay is just as important as Bass River, Nantucket Sound, or Parker's River. Why aren't the homes north of 6A going to be hooked up to this system? And the last part, I feel as though I'm voting under duress. I think we all are, from the threat from the DEP. Okay? And I would like that on the record, in the record, that we're voting under duress from the DEP. I think the board of selectmen should take action against the DEP.
He had a few questions. Excuse me, Mr. Colby, let him answer those questions, then I'll get to you. He's behind you, that's the
Oh, I'm sorry.
The physical problem.
Yes, I was taking notes on some of the questions. Hopefully, I hit those that I have listed here. But the last, starting with the last one first, there are areas, as was mentioned, it's only approximately two-thirds of the town that needs to be sewed in order to meet our water quality goals for nitrogen removal. The areas that are primarily north of 6A that aren't part of the plan are because the water that flows towards Nantucket, I'm sorry, towards Cape Cod Bay does not have a nitrogen issue. There's natural salt marshes in that area that are cleaning the water, so there is not a nitrogen pollution issue in Cape Cod Bay.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go to that side, sir. We can't hear you. You gotta juice it a little bit.
Hello?
There you go.
Gordon Carpenter, High Bank Road. How many wastewater treatment facilities will there be, and are they all in Phase One?
Wastewater facilities. Go ahead, Jeff.
The wastewater treatment plant location is planned for 99 Buck Island Road. That site has sufficient space to be the only treatment location for the town of Yarmouth.
What I saw on one of the maps, it looked like something was going to happen at Bass River Golf Course.
Good question. In future phases, effluent recharge will need to be cited in other locations, but that's not the treatment component. That's just returning the cleaned water to the ground, and that would happen at Bass River Golf Course in future phases well down the road.
Okay, another quick question is, High Bank Road in Phase Four?
It's in a later phase. It's probably, I'd have to look at the specific map, but it's in that same range of phases, yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Sir?
Hello, thank you. Jack Elliott, Cell C of West Yarmouth. Over 40-plus years as a lifelong, well, full-time resident of the town. I'm hearing a lot of the town and our town leaders being at mercy to the Mass Department of Environmental Protection, Mass MDP. So just based on what I'm hearing tonight in Phase One, and being a part of, you know, eight eventual phases, maybe it's time that the town takes a position to demand and to fight back and require the Commonwealth to pay for this extraordinary, indebted our grandchildren program. Now, I see a lot of people, you know, applauding and very supportive of this Phase One, but the Phase One cost an estimated $210 million. Now, what about Phase Two through Eight? Where are those anticipated costs? These are unknowns, and for these unknowns, I could certainly never, ever, ever indebted my grandchildren to this program. So based on just, you know, I don't want to stay here, it's not about me. It's about the future of our town, the young people, the students. How are they ever going to afford to live here? They're already leaving at alarming rates. So therefore, again, I can never, ever, ever vote for such a program. So based on just the facts that I'm hearing tonight on Phase One, I know I'm repeating myself, but I want to drive home the point. I vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody like to address that?
And maybe have a little more stones, and go to the Commonwealth, the governor, and the Mass DEP, and tell them how the citizens of this town, 40-odd years in the town, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Very much.
Would anybody like to address that? I'll go to the next question then. Sir? Yeah, go ahead.
Steve O'Neil, Precinct Four. I'm a resident here in the town and support this project, and I'm also chairman of the town's Community and Economic Development Committee. And as such, one of the things we've been hearing on the committee for a number of years is, we would love, as a business, to invest in this community, but for, we don't know what our costs are going to be for searing. This is an opportunity, I think the committee feels that we should all get behind and support to extend and expand, and just to follow up with the cheerleader of the finance committee said a few moments ago, to expand the tax base. That said, the Community and Economic Development Committee offers their full support for the proposed wastewater plan for the first phase of this project. The town's wastewater plan has been well-vetted and provides an extraordinary benefit to the local community via a responsible plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Rick Bishop, Precinct Seven. I'm the executive director for the Friends of Bass River. We are a nonprofit that is, we act as the voice of Bass River. Bass River is very ill. In fact, it's so ill, the Mass Division of Marine Fisheries has prohibited shellfishing in parts of the river. Our organization does water testing weekly from May through September in seven locations throughout Bass River, from Mill Pond all the way to West Dennis. And I can tell you absolutely, the water quality continues to degrade. We can't wait for this. In 1985, I scalloped with my father, and we're able to get our limit in three drags. Today, there are zero scallops in Bass River. It's 40 years of degradation that will take 40 years probably to come back. Our children and our grandchildren deserve this. I'm asking you to please vote for Article 18 this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir? They're in the blue sweatshirt.
Yes, thank you. John Heek from 20 Candy Lane. My question is basically on the cost between $8,000 to $10,000 for a hookup between your septic to the main carrying line of the, for the treatment plant? And is that consideration of going through the house, around the house, is that going to be up to the property owner to foot that bill, or how's that work?
Mr. Colby?
As part of the design process, our design engineers have looked at the septic system location at each individual property and have located the stub as close to that septic system in the best practical location for making that connection possible. In some cases, that means we've gone down a side street so that you don't have to worry about coming around the house. But if you do, you can still bring the pipe outside and around the house. You don't necessarily have to change the plumbing inside your house. That might be needed on occasion, but that would be very rare that you'd actually have to change the plumbing inside your house. For the most part, you'll be able to connect to your septic system by going around the house.
Other words, you go around the house, sometimes that goes, you have to go under existing foundations, buildings, you know, could be a patio there, could be a work shed there, could be anything in that direction of that, of that line. Do you, what's considered about that? They're going to try to sleeve under it or run a line through it?
Each one of those circumstances needs to be looked at on a case-by-case basis. You'll have to have an engineer that'll take a look at that, or a plumber that can help facilitate that. So there might be some special circumstances, but for the most part, the stubs that the town's putting right to the property line have been located in very convenient locations to make a connection to your septic system.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Hi, Brian Bragginton Smith, native Cape Codder, born at Cape Cod Hospital, coming on 70 years now. And I formed the Lewis Bay Research Center back in the early 1990s because Lewis Bay was in desperate condition. And I've been fighting this fight, and I've been trying to get this project, or project like this, done for the past 40 years. And what I'm telling you guys is that it's not DEP. There are forces that are working right now that are, make DEP look like a mouse. And we have a problem here. Our problem has not gotten better. Our problem has gotten worse, and we have to do something about it. It's time for us to stand up and take responsibility for our environment and our future. And it's for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a comment over here? Ma'am?
Hi, yes, it's Kelly Abrecht. I'm in District Five, and I just want to express that there has been a lot of talk about the finances and what it's going to cost. And I just want to put the opinion out there that when you're looking at a functioning environment that you can live in, there is no cost to that. So I just want everyone to be aware that when you are seeing things going downhill and everything's dying around you because of the population increasing on Cape Cod, we really got to think about protecting that environment. So maybe the finance aspect of it is not as important as you're looking at that.
Thank you. Sir?
David Bernstein, Two Wizardia Road, West Yarmouth. Since 2015, well, I've been living down here since I was born as a summer resident, but 2015, we moved here, and this sewer system had been talked about since then. There are a number of issues. I agree with the gentleman who just spoke up in the front. Lewis Bay is a sick body of water that we need to work on to make better. I can remember lots of fish and wildlife in the area that's no longer there. We have a person who said that they feel like they're being pushed by the town to do this without enough information. I've been going to meetings since 2015 about this. The town has given many, many meetings that people may have not attended, but they were there, and they needed to put themselves out to go to those meetings. And finally, I don't think that, when they talk about the average costs, I assume that the less water I use, the lower my sewer rate will be, and I'd like to know whether that's true or not. So they talked about an average three-bedroom house. I live in a two-bedroom house, only two of us, we don't use very much water, therefore, maybe my costs will be less. And I think people need to know that, too. But I'm definitely voting yes, and I hope urge all of you to do so, too.
Someone want to answer that question about the bill?
Yes, the operation of the plant is based on the flow. So if you conserve water, it will lower that average cost for your bill.
Sir? Did you have a question over here?
Yes, I have a comment or two. My name is John Deliso, Precinct Six. I might be the only person in the room that learned how to swim 75 years ago at Wimbledon Beach. I know Lewis Bay. I can vividly remember as a boy, the deep seagrass on the bed of the bay, it's nonexistent. I can remember going at the Mill Creek time and time again in a little boat, when it was alive and vibrant, and there was all kinds of marsh grass and marine life that's not there today. I've been lucky. I've lived in a lot of places around the country. I've been here as a summer person until I retired in 2011, now full-time over the last dozen years. Yarmouth is a beautiful place. I think sometimes people in this town don't realize just how nice a place it is. I've been fortunate to be on the Water Resources Advisory Committee for the last five years. The committee has looked at alternative after alternative and come to the conclusion that what's before you tonight is by far and away the most attractive alternative to the town. Can it be nitpicked? Sure. But any proposal of this magnitude can be found by parties that choose to, to find a problem. This is a big, big win for the town, in my opinion. I think we are lucky to have had some very, very talented individuals involved in helping the town through the process. I'll only go out on a limb here and just mention two names that I think, in my mind, deserves some credit. One is the chairman of the Water Resources Committee over the last five years, Kurt Seas. I don't know if he's here tonight. And secondly, I think you can see tonight, and Jeff Colby, that the town has an absolutely talented, talented individual that will be required in the years ahead to implement this. So I hope we all vote for it. This is a very, very significant event for the town. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate every comment, both on diverse points of view. We want to hear some more comments, but please try to keep them to things that have not yet been said, you know, sort of common sense, so.
Excuse me. Thank you. Christine Greeley from Precinct Six. I've been a seasonal resident since 1981 and full-time since 2006. And I have to say, this past, the process that's gone on for a period of time here in the town with your town employees and the hearings and the staff and everything has been really incredibly impressive. I just think there's an amazing amount of work that's gone into this. I have one question, however, because part of it, obviously, we are attempting to keep the state from implementing some pretty onerous things on homeowners with these specialized treatment systems on your existing septic systems. Is there any guarantee, given we're looking at some decades out, for getting the entire town into town into searing, is there any guarantee that the state isn't going to turn around again and then suddenly penalize and say, oh, the properties that you don't have already included in the system now need to have the innovation systems and that? So is there, are there any guarantees, either in any of the documents, the agreements, or anything that are going on with them, that might give us some protections as we go forward? Thank you.
Thank you. Bob?
Yes, thank you. It's an excellent question. And under the proposed regulations, they have a watershed permit that we're attempting to align with the town's comprehensive wastewater management plan. And as long as a community has a working watershed permit with the DEP, their regulations stipulate that they will not move forward with any of the requirements in any area of the town.
Okay, thank you. Ma'am?
Holly Anderson, Precinct 8. Just a question about the connection of individual houses. Given that probably every house along a street would have to be connected, would the town be in any way involved in trying to facilitate efficiencies so that each individual homeowner didn't have to try to find a contractor to do that hookup for them so that it could all be performed, even though the homeowners would have to pay for it? Thank you.
Jeff, did you know something about that?
I've heard that. Good question.
Yeah, I would suggest that homeowners or associations, this came up at one of our outreach sessions, band together to do that in, in bulk. You certainly will get a better price. I've seen that in other communities where that has happened. We can certainly try to facilitate that, but that is an individual cost that if you can work with your neighbor, it will bring the cost down.
Thank you. Sir? I think you're the last questioner.
Okay. Rolf Anderson, Precinct 1. Article 18 seems to make sense for an existing situation. The question is, is the town of Yarmouth already overbuilt?
I, is what?
Is the town of Yarmouth already overbuilt?
Anyone?
Oh. Can anybody answer that?
Well, based on just if, if you intend to have septic systems, yes, you're, you're overbuilt. There's more building here than can be sustained with the septic system. So I, I would say that's why we're here, because of all of those septic systems that have been built, they're just not sustainable, as, as we've learned. I, I would say, though, with the introduction of the wastewater system, there are growth controls that go along with those so that it's not going to open up, you know, new realms of, of overdevelopment. It, it's designed to address the problems that, that we put ourselves in.
Can't we stop issuing building permits?
That, that's a function of, of your zoning. It's not under this article.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ma'am, did you have a question or comment?
It's a comment, if that's okay. My name is Leslie Richardson and I'm on 27 Warbler Lane in Yarmouth. And the comment is really that, based on, it's very similar to what you were just talking about, which is that we find ourselves here now today because of decisions that have been made over the past 50 or 60 years that relate to zoning and the level of density of people that live in this area. And, you know, those people that made those decisions didn't really understand what the long-term consequences are, but we know what they are now. We can see them in our water and we need to be responsible and stand up and pay the bill that we have brought to ourselves. It's not DEP, it's not the state. We made these decisions at the town level. These are zoning decisions. We made them. We need to fix it.
Thank you. Sir?
Ethan Singer, Precinct 1. I heard a lot of arguments, people that were fighting against it. A lot of people making comments about, oh, my kids, my grandkids, you know, I want them to see this, I don't want them to pay for this. And so I'm 23 years old. You know, looking around the crowd, I don't exactly see a lot of people my age, so I just wanted to maybe make a statement from my perspective as a member of that community. And so I think for a lot of us, that the environment is something that we need to make a point to protect regardless of the cost. And including those costs, yes, they may increase down the road. Yes, there are costs that we don't see for future phases, but if we want Cape Cod to continue being the beautiful Cape Cod that we all know and love and to not have your kids or your grandkids come back and visit you and see the body of water you learned to swim in as a nice pool of algae and sludge, then we need to start the process now.
Okay, thank you. Sir? I think you'll be the last comment. Go ahead. Go for it.
Hi, I'm Alan Shipley. I live at Briar Circle, which is right off of South CF. I've been a scientist and entrepreneur for over 40 years. You cannot measure nitrogen in solution. If you could, I'd be a billionaire. You can only measure species of nitrogen. You can measure ammonia, nitrate, and nitrite. Now, if any of you have been to a fish market and you smell a fish with ammonia, you're not going to buy it. So ammonia is going to happen naturally in an ocean environment. My question is, I've been trying to find the raw data that people use to base their assessments on. Can't find it. This is a global initiative. That's why the people in Holland are going crazy, they're doing the same thing. Now, I love this town. I've been here since 1957. I clean up the beach every time I go down myself. It's just something we all do, we love to kick. But I guarantee, if you get the raw data, you will see it is golf courses, lawn chemicals, commercial laundries, those are the main polluters. If everybody had a Title V and there were no businesses around, we wouldn't be having this meeting. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Sir, do you have a question? Go ahead.
I just had a quick question. I'm in Captain's Village. My name is Bill Hauser. What about people, either one of these plants are going to cost us money, we all know that. What about the low-income people or fixed-income people that quite frankly just can't afford anything of an increase with food prices, insurance prices, homeowners' insurance, everything else? What is, is there any kind of safety net for these people?
Uh, Bob?
So we've adopted these programs to accommodate the lowest possible cost for, for people that own the homes, okay? And the Betterment Program, we voted last year to extend from 20 years to 30 years. And tonight, we're trying to get the interest rate down to 0%. In addition, we've leveraged eight or nine other funding sources to make it so that individual homeowners are only responsible for roughly 15% of the cost through a Betterment. And in addition, those costs for the connection through the Aqua Fund program go down to 0% if your income is below the median average. So those are the programs that are in place right now to keep this cost as low as it possibly can be.
Just one person would be ashamed, so. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Sir, do you have a question?
Please. Kevin Burke, Precinct 5. Longtime resident, Yarmouth, right, a long time. Anyway, do you have studies on denitrifying bacteria that, for septic systems? Because I've seen them work, I've used them in mine. Gone. The septic cleaning guy comes, opens up my system, takes a look and he goes, when'd you put the swimming pool in? I want to see those studies. And second question, how are you compensating all the houses that are near the Buck Island septic treatment plant? Because if you drive by the Cape Cod Mall in the middle of summer, you know that septic system. All those property owners down there, oh my God, that's millions of dollars that they lost because of that septic plant. How are you going to compensate all those homeowners? They can't sit out in their backyard anymore. That's fine, I, let me tell you, I've been in this town so long, there's a serious problem here. This has been going on for years. I installed septic systems when I was a kid, lots of them, and they should not have been going in the environments that they were going or the houses, but they were approved. That's already happened, we can't change that. But I think you're jumping too soon to this thing. I understand it's a serious problem now and it has, but you know.
Thank you.
You have to figure out how you're going to pay all these people off where you're putting that septic system.
Jeff, would you like to answer the last question? That will be it.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to comment real quickly. You really can't compare what we're proposing tonight to the Hyannis Treatment Facility. That was built in the 1950s. This is a state-of-the-art wastewater treatment facility. If you go to any of those that are in that category, you don't have the same odor issues that Hyannis has. So this is a much different situation.
Thank you. A question? Do we have a, the question's been called, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All, all in favor of the motion on Article 18? Please raise your cards and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Two.
It's a clear-cut two-thirds vote. The motion carries. Article 19.
Okay. Not a lot of plastic bottle fans. I handled that pretty well.
stick around. Not going to get into those, but there are reasons to stay and there are some other extremely important articles. And, you know, we know human nature, but we'd ask that, I don't know who's playing tonight, the Bruins or the Celtics, but they'll, they'll, they'll win or lose without us. Article 19. Mike Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move Article 19 is printed in the warrant. Board of Selectmen recommends four to zero in favor.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends unanimously.
Explanation, and I believe there's a presentation?
This action designates the development program for Phase 1 development in invested revenue district. Allocates a percentage of new growth as revenue for that program and establishes the financial system for the revenue. The action at the prior town meeting of April 26, 2022 designated the area and properties that will specifically be included in the DIF, or known as DIF, the DIF District. This the second stage in the combined approach from the prior town meeting. This is the second stage in the combined approach from the prior town meeting. These actions facilitate new economic growth through infrastructure improvements that will leverage private investments for the wastewater program, support employment, encourage business growth, generate increased tax revenues, and create positive economic ripple effects throughout the town. The outcome will also expand the commercial tax base, thereby diversifying the revenues, which will reduce the impact on residential properties.
I think we have a presentation. Mr. Scott?
Sure. Bill Scott, Assistant Town Administrator. As was indicated in the explanation, we were here at the last town meeting and what we did was we set the area for the DIF District, that is, what parcels would be involved. This town meeting, we're setting the initial percentage of how much new growth would come out of any new growth that is in this Phase 1 district, and then defining the types of district and types of work. The definition of that work is the sewer project itself. So what the DIF does is it's not a new tax, it is not a burden on any taxpayer. It takes a small portion of growth and applies it to the borrowing. That area is commensurate with the area of the project, so the same parcels that are involved in the project would be part of the DIF District. And this is part of the overall innovative financing plan that doesn't really affect, directly affect property owners. So the conservative nature of this is that existing property value will be retained by the levy. So we're not taking any existing property value. Market increases in value retained by the levy. Rehabilitation upgrades, so if it's not new growth, that is not an improvement to the property, retained by the levy. Property sale, value updates and things like that, retained by the levy. New growth, additional square feet, new rooms and new facilities would basically go to the DIF. Right now, we have that percentage at 100%. With our taxation in that area is about 5.5 million, about 538,000 of that is basically estimated to be moved toward the DIF. So let's take a look at an example. Existing property values, and let's say this is a sample property project, is $4 million, and this is a restaurant. The market increase maybe was $60,000. Rehabilitation that they might have done in a restaurant that has upgraded the kitchen and things like that, the dining room was half a million. So those tax revenues, they end up in a levy. So we're not losing tax revenues to the DIF that we need for operations and things like that. But if there's an additional dining room, let's say for 1.5 million, that taxation goes to the DIF. And the reason for that is really this. Over the past, this chart, you can't see the years on the bottom, but it starts in 2002 and ends in 2022. The chart that you see, 2022 tax levy by class, this shows that the residential class is paying for most of the costs associating with the town budget, 91.27%. Now, back in 2002, that was 85% and not 91%. So you can see also, commercial and industrial is pretty well flat-lined, in fact, slowly declining. And we believe that's because of wastewater. There have been upticks in the economy where other areas in the state have shown growth because of increased capital, lower interest rates and things like that. That really hasn't happened here, and a lot of that is, when talking to commercial property owners, is the sewer. So what this does is the growth that will occur within the context of the zoning, and the Planning Office and Planning Board has done some great work in creating separate districts along the corridor to manage that growth, that growth would end up pushing back into the debt and paying for the wastewater project. But more important to that is, as you see these increased values in commercial, that share of the pie by commercial at 5.89% and industrial at .44%, and those will grow, which means that your obligation as residents will decrease, or that 91.27% will decrease. So the DIF basically takes that new growth, which is a very So the DIF basically takes that new growth, which is a very limited definition, as I've showed you, and applies it to the debt. So that's not coming out of the property owner, and it's not coming out of anything except for if that restaurant added dining room and seats, that gets captured by the DIF. So to get here in terms of our estimates in the DIF, we actually worked with a group of commercial property owners who gained us access to about 100 property owners that we would, we surveyed and we kept in touch with, with emails. And in the DIF project, we have definitive projects that people have identified as potentially moving forward. The early revenue is from projects that already have moved forward, that are already in the ground. So there's an apartment complex that the value was at $600,000 initially, and it was built within the, between, it was completed between last town meeting and this town meeting. That's in the DIF, and that's actually not new growth, that's already happened. So advantages of the DIF are really twofold. It is not a direct cost to a property owner, and it takes advantage of the fact that with sewer, you are going to have managed growth and that the DIF captures that growth. And our goal is, as said by the Finance Committee, Chairman of the Economic Development Committee, that that pie needs to grow in other places other than residential homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Seeing none? We, take a vote? All in favor of Article 19? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Article 20? Mike Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move Article 20 as printed in the warrant.
Second? Recommendation?
The Finance, excuse me, the Board of Selectmen recommend by a vote of four to zero.
Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee also recommends by a vote of four to zero.
Explanation?
This article accepts the provision of state law, which allows the town to charge an interest rate for betterments that is up to 2% above the town's borrowing costs rather than the required statutory rate of 5%. For Yarmouth's projected wastewater betterments, this would lower the interest rate to the property owners from 5% down to a maximum rate of 2% if the town is able to obtain 0% interest from the state revolving loan fund, which it expects. An owner of land assessed may pay off the remaining principal balance at any time they wish without a prepayment penalty.
Questions? Comments? Seeing none? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Norm, did you have a question?
Thank you, Norm Holcomb. It says up to. Can the town decide on some lower amount?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? May I take a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The vote carries. Article 21. Who's gonna handle? Mr. Moderator? Mark Forrest.
I move Article 21 as printed in the warrant.
Recommend, second, recommendation?
The Board of Selectmen recommends four to zero.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends unanimously.
Explanation?
Mr. Moderator, Phase Three of the Higgins-Croll Road Shared Use Path will require nine permanent easements from adjacent residents for utility poles and guy wire supports. The Higgins-Croll Road Shared Use Path will connect with the town's existing sidewalk networks and with the Cape Cod Rail Trail. Phase One was completed in the summer of 2021 along the east side of Higgins-Croll Road between Chickadee Lane and the Horse Pond Conservation Trail's parking area. The upcoming Phases Two and Three will complete the project between the Higgins-Croll Road roundabout to the north and Buck Island Road to the south. Phase Two will be completed in the late spring and summer of 2023. Phase Three is expected to be constructed in the fall and winter of 2023, 2024.
Everybody got that? Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries by a two-thirds vote. Article 22?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 22 as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation?
Recommendation from the Board of Selectmen is five to zero.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends unanimously.
Explanation?
The Sanitation Division proposes to replace the deteriorating concrete pad at the Yarmouth Sanitation Facility. The pad system is more than 20 years old and is at the end of its useful life. This article will fund the replacement and the reconstruction of the pad to allow the continued operation of the facility.
Questions, comments? This requires a two-thirds majority vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries by a two-thirds vote. Article 23?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 23, the motion, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation?
The Board of Selectmen recommends five to zero.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends unanimously.
Explanation?
Mr. Moderator, reduce costly repairs as this aging vehicle used daily to move municipal solid waste and recycle material. The article will authorize the town to finance a purchase of a new loader over three years, after which the town will retain the ownership.
Any questions, comments? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries by two-thirds. Article 24?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 24 as printed in the warrant.
Seconded? Recommendation?
Selectmen recommend five to zero.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends unanimously.
Explanation?
This article provides funding for settled or to-be-settled collective bargaining agreements. The town strives to settle contracts that are fair to the employees of the town and allows the town to stay within the constraints of Proposition Two and a Half.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Article 25?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 25 as printed in the warrant.
Seconded? Recommendation?
The Board of Selectmen recommends five to zero.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends unanimously.
Explanation?
Mr. Moderator, ongoing and updated training is critical for the successful resolution of critical incidents within our community. The Yarmouth Police Department and the Yarmouth Fire Department require specialized training to handle any active shooter, hostile event-type situations. The Yarmouth Police Department and the Yarmouth Fire Department are requesting funding to conduct joint, hands-on, mass casualty training exercises to increase the response capabilities to an active shooter-type event. The increased knowledge gained from this training will improve the lifesaving capabilities of our police department and our fire department.
Thank you. Question? Microphone?
Did somebody fiddle with this thing?
There you go.
Yeah, there we go, okay. This amount of money, is this for an annual basis, or is this a one-time kind of thing? What is it?
I believe this is a one-time allocation of funding.
So what, once they train, you know, some people, it's not gonna be an ongoing thing? The fact that, it sounds as though, I don't know how many personnel are involved in this thing, $145,000, but apparently all of it is gonna be put on overtime, right? So I guess that adds up very quickly, right?
We'll ask the chief of police if he'd like to address some of these specific questions. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll ask Chief Lennon to clarify for the benefit of the public.
Good evening. I'm Deputy Chief Andrew O'Malley. The proposal that we put together includes the entire police department, 59 officers to train, along with 60 firefighters to train for a one-time event. It would require 16 hours of training. There's a few other costs involved, including a four-hour tabletop exercise for our command staff, as well as four hours for all dispatch personnel.
Any other questions or comments? Do I see one? No? Okay. Take a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Article 26? Mark Forrest?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 26 as printed in the warrant.
Seconded? Recommendation?
The Board of Selectmen recommends five to zero.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends unanimously.
Explanation?
Mr. Moderator, this article transfers funds that we've received during the previous fiscal year as the Town of Yarmouth's share of a national opioid settlement, which requires a specific town meeting appropriation and must be spent on specific substance abuse prevention efforts.
Questions, comments? Ms. Greeley?
See what happens here? Is it on?
There you go. It's out again, yeah. Try it again.
Okay, there we go. Christine Greeley, Precinct Six. As a number of you know, I spent a number of years chairing the Substance Awareness Committee here in Yarmouth. And one of the questions I have is, the amount of this settlement is so small. I know there'd been some questioning down on it. Are we making any progress on this? Because this is just a, literally pennies in the pan compared to some of the costs and the other things that we've had in this community, between professional staff, other people working, and also life and other kinds of things that have gone on here. So is there any progress being made on questioning why the amount for the Town of Yarmouth is so low? Thank you.
I think Mr. Rittenhour has that one.
Mr. Moderator, I can answer the question. The Board of Selectmen is very well aware of the amount of funding that the town is receiving, and quite frankly, we're not that thrilled with that number either. And so we've been in touch with the Attorney General's Office to gain their assistance in seeing if Yarmouth can get a share of funding that's more in line with what we believe we should be receiving. We think the number should be substantially higher than what's been received. But nonetheless, we need this article to pass in order to put the funds that we do have to use.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, take a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Article 27?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 27 as printed in the warrant.
Seconded? Recommendation?
The Selectmen recommend five to zero.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends four to one.
Explanation?
Mr. Moderator, the Tourism Revenue Preservation Fund was established by special legislation, and it draws upon the rooms and meals tax receipts. The funding is overseen by the Committee on Community and Economic Development and is used to stimulate local tourism economy through physical improvements, marketing, and other special projects designed to attract people to Yarmouth.
Questions? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Article 28? Which was, oh, this is CPA, it'll be presented by Gary Ellis.
Gary Ellis, I am chairman of the Community Preservation Committee. So, Mr. Moderator, I move Article 28 as printed in the warrant.
Second, do we have a recommendation from Selectmen?
Selectmen unanimously recommend.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends unanimously as well.
Explanation?
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Moderator, this article is a required housekeeping article. It appears at every annual town meeting as required under the Community Preservation Act. A minimum of 10% of CPA revenues must be set aside for each of the following purposes: community housing, historic preservation, and open space. Additionally, 5% of the total revenue is set aside for operating expenses. FY '24 CPA revenues are estimated at 1.9 million and are based on an estimated property tax levy of 69.6 million. Figures include an estimated 20% match from the state of $318,000, including a supplemental match distributions made by communities that have adopted the 3% surcharge.
Questions? Comments? All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Article 29?
I move Article 29 as printed in the warrant.
Select Board?
Selectmen recommend by a vote in favor of five to zero.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends unanimously.
Community Preservation Committee recommends.
Explanation?
My name is Lee Hamilton. Did I not introduce myself?
Hi, Lee.
Project A would approve CPA funds to the Yarmouth Municipal Affordable Housing Trust created under GLC 44th, Section 55C to create, preserve, and support affordable housing at a below 80% of the area median income. The Affordable Housing Trust uses these funds to support various homeownership and rental housing efforts, including acquisition and rehabilitation, as well as supporting efforts of private developers of affordable housing. Project B would provide funding to friends or relatives with autism and related disabilities, in parentheses, forward, for construction of eight one-bedroom apartments in Dennis for developmentally disabled Cape Cod residents. Residents are selected from across the Cape, and funding for municipal CPA programs is anticipated. Project C would provide $120,000 in CPA funds for community housing projects to the Howard Ecumenical Council for housing, to preserve homes for income-eligible residents for repairs to their homes to ensure decent, safe, warm, and healthy housing conditions. Repairs include items such as new roofs, windows, siding to ensure watertightness, and upgrades to heating, plumbing, and electrical systems.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? I see one. Yes, sir.
Holcomb? Is that, okay?
It's working.
My question to our town administrator or to the Select Board is how we will avoid projects under Item A that may deteriorate our town water quality. Are we committed to avoiding additional developments, such as one that's being discussed at Forest Road, that would add 50 units, 50 affordable units on 19 acres of property that would deteriorate the water quality further for wells number four, five, 10, and 11? Is there anything that these, is there a policy or a position that the board is taking with regard to avoiding additional development of that sort?
I do have a question. Is that related to this particular project?
It doesn't specify a project. It doesn't specify a project.
Okay. None of these funds will be used on the Forest Road project? Zero.
Okay, so none of these monies or any other monies within the Yarmouth Housing, the Affordable Housing Trust going to be used?
That is correct.
No other funds will be used? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. That mic is...
Wacko.
Here we go.
There you go.
An Irish settlement. With the increase in properties coming into town, affordable housing. This past fall, summer, we had a water problem with two wells being shut down. And we had water restrictions put in effect. I'd like to know if the Water Department is going to add any more wells. That caused the problem of a restriction. The water, we had to shut down two wells, which caused the shortage. So with these additional units coming in, we haven't seen anything about the Water Department adding wells to offset in the future any wells being shut down. From what I get from the town, the last time a new water well was put in was in the early 1990s. And we've done some growth, and we're looking at growth. So I'd like to hear from the Water Department if they're planning on putting any water wells in on the tons of land that we have in the town of Yarmouth here.
Okay, the question is, are we adding any new wells?
Yes, it's not about this article.
Is that the question?
It's not about this article.
I don't know if that's related to this article.
Well, the article is related to growth.
Oh.
About units coming in. So are we adding wells to offset that? Thank you.
Well, I guess we take that under advisement.
I guess it's no.
Any further?
I have a question, Christine Greeley. In here, I understand under B that basically it's a contribution that all of the various towns on the Cape do to support that project. But under C, I'm puzzled with the fact money's going to the Howard Ecumenical Council, and it doesn't indicate, just says to preserve homes with repairs. Are those for Yarmouth homeowners only, or is this, again, part of a collective kind of enterprise?
This is for Yarmouth residents only, I believe. They contribute to different programs across in the area, and this is for Yarmouth.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I believe we can vote on this article. All in favor? All opposed? The article carries. Article 30.
I move Article 30 as printed in the warrant.
Select Board recommendation?
Select Board recommends unanimously.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends unanimously.
Explanation?
Community Preservation Committee recommends. This article does not appropriate any funding. This article amends a previously approved article to permit housing units acquired and rehabilitated through the buy-down program to be sold or rented with affordable housing deed restriction. This amendment adds flexibility to permit the Affordable Housing Trust to facilitate affordable home ownership or affordable rental property. The town's recent housing production plan identifies creation of affordable rentals as its number-one priority.
Questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Article 31.
Mr. Moderator, George Schlauer for the CPC. I move Article 31 as printed in the warrant.
Seconded. Select Board recommendation?
Select Board recommends unanimously.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends unanimously.
Explanation?
Project A would provide $400,000 to fund Phase II of the Taylor Brae Farm rehabilitation, including shingles, trim, windows, doors, lighting, interior finishes, electric, plumbing, and septic. Project B would provide $100,000 to replace the HVAC and gutters and to repoint bricks on the Yarmouth Port Library, which was built in 1870. The library is an independent, privately-funded public library and open to all 24 hours a week. Project C would provide $264,188 to the Yarmouth Friends to restore the 1809 Meeting House on North Main Street. The project will include foundation work, restoration of doors, windows, and siding, and a new handicap ramp, and mechanical upgrades. There has been no major structural work performed on this building since it was built, making it one of the earliest unaltered structures built in South Yarmouth.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Article 32.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 32 as printed in the warrant.
Seconded. Select Board?
Select Board recommends unanimously.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends unanimously.
Explanation?
This article appropriates CPA funds for open space recreation projects, with each item appropriated as a separate project. Project A would provide $167,600 to the Friends of Bass River for an upper Bass River watershed restoration project, which seeks to improve the water quality in Bass River by improved flushing. Project B would provide $100,000 to the YD Red Sox to install safety netting along the sidelines of Red Wilson Field at DY High School. Project C would appropriate $3 million from existing funds for the construction of the Riverwalk Park, Boardwalk Loop, and event space infrastructure located at 669 Route 28, the former drive-in site, and on a portion of the Unnumbered Lot to the south. At this point, I'd like to hand the explanation over to Mr. Jim Saban, Chairman of the Drive-In Site Utilization Committee.
Thank you, Joanne. Jim Saban, Chairman of the Drive-In Site Utilization Committee. Before I start, I'd like to take a minute to thank Town Planner Kathy Williams, our design team Beta Inc., led by Eric Gall, and our entire Drive-In Site Utilization Committee, and most of all, you, the people of Yarmouth, who have helped us to get to this point. Slide one. Back in 1986, the town purchased the property at 669 Route 28 for recreational purposes. The property abuts Route 28 on the right, Parker's River along the bottom, and marshland to Seagull Beach on the left. Since 1986, a lot of effort has gone into different ideas for this property, including this project, which has been well-vetted since the Drive-In Site Utilization Committee was formed in 2015. A detailed concept design fight feasibility study was conducted in 2017 and 18, which included robust public participation, as well as continued public meetings through disac, Board of Selectment updates, and permitting. Over 80 public meetings, I'd suggest probably more than any other project in the history of this town, have been held on this project since 2015. Public participation has resulted in numerous changes to the project, with the most notably being the elimination of the boardwalk extension to Seagull Beach and incorporating a smaller loop boardwalk. As a result, we now have a very viable recreation plan for a new public park along Parker's River with a looped boardwalk on town-owned land to the south. Slide two, please. The six-foot-wide elevated loop boardwalk provides amazing marsh views that can be enjoyed by everyone as it will be fully accessible. Along the boardwalk will be three outlooks, benches, and interpretive educational signage about the wildlife and ecology benefits of the marsh, a great opportunity to educate our children and visitors alike. Slide three. The park will include restrooms, parking, public kayak launch, children's play areas, space for artist shanties and public art, and a large, open... Turn the page. ...space for periodic special events such as performances, festivals, and other community events. This project will create a destination location to help revitalize Route 28, promote economic development, and encourage private investment in the area. The park offers health benefits and recreational opportunities for residents and visitors alike, and supports the town's vision for a central gathering space for our community and more public access to the water. We have obtained many of the necessary permits and are actively working to secure the remaining few. If we receive the needed funding, we expect to go out to bid this late summer and start construction in the fall of 2023. We have never been closer to constructing a project on this site in over the 37 years. I'd ask that you support this. Slide four. This wonderful and viable project is within our grasp, but we need to move forward now. Inflation has worked against us, and we will continue to work as we... As we will... Yeah. Has worked against us and will continue to work against us if we delay this project. Although the estimated cost of construction is $10.6 million, the project creates a significant town asset which incorporates many different recreational elements into a single project. Although we are asking for funding this evening, we are still looking into grants and other funding sources, including discussions with the Board of Selectmen about donations and naming rights to reduce the amount that would ultimately be needed to bond the near end of construction. There are also other long-term funding opportunities through plank sales and fees for periodic special events. However, we need to know now we have enough funds secured to award a construction contract this fall and get the project going while we continue to pursue other funding for the project. If full funding is not authorized, the project would be delayed due to the need to redesign, re-permit, a scaled-back project, or to pursue another grant funding. Delays would increase project costs due to inflation and may put at risk over $2 million in other grants awarded for the project. There are also regulatory changes in the works which would impact the design of the project and increase the project cost if we delay. We often hear about how long it takes to complete town projects. We ask that you vote for the funding needed to finish this beneficial project that the town and the Drive-In Site Utilization Committee volunteers have been working on for eight years, and create an asset for our community that we'll all be proud of and will be enjoying for future generations. I ask that you support this article.
Question? Ma'am?
Vita Morris, Precinct 1. I would like to go back to A, the $167,000 that is being given to the Friends of Bass River. I'm going to try one more time. Just how exactly are the Friends of Bass River, how do they fit in to the bigger project? Are they a loose cannon within the whole project? I would like for somebody to explain a little better, you know, exactly where they fit in.
I think we have an expert witness here.
Good evening. Rick Bishop, Executive Director for the Friends of Bass River. This is part of a comprehensive water improvement project we've been working on for four years now. It started with a project to remove the six-foot undersized culvert under North Dennis Road and placing it with a 60-foot-wide bridge so we can get better water flow up into the upper Bass River headwaters. That part of Bass River requires a 73% reduction in nitrogen. That will do a good part of it. We are also taking the 57.2 acres of retired cranberry bogs and turning them back into the historic wetlands. So those become excellent nitrogen sinks and carbon sinks, further improving the water quality on the river. In 1833, Hamlin's Brook, which is at the very end of the river, was the second-largest herring catch in all of Massachusetts. That is zero because of dikes that are in place because of cranberry bogs. This will be part of the design work there. And finally, when we reestablished the fish habitat, the Weir Road culvert, which is about 200 years old, has completely collapsed. And this will be a further design element of that project. So we've done that as motivation to improve water quality in all of Bass River. We've done that, as I said before this evening, a nonprofit organization that's working to improve our water quality in kind of an organic matter. We've been fortunate enough to receive SNAP funding from the federal government to pay for a large portion of this. So this is just the very final phases of a project that will result in a huge improvement for the town.
Thank you. Ma'am?
I think there must be something wrong with my English. I thought I asked the question that I think is more appropriate. It could be answered either by the town administrator or by Jeff Colby. Does this group fit in, the bigger wastewater project somewhere? Or are they a separate group, you know, doing some work that will benefit the big project? I just would like to know if anybody can over... I mean, again, because of the situation with the Bass River and the town of Dennis across, you know, half of it or whatever, I would very much like to know exactly where that situation is.
I think Mr. Rittenhour has a response.
Yes, thank you very much for your question. The Friends of Bass River are not a rogue agency. They're working collectively with the town. And I would say the results of this work will be able to reduce the overall cost of wastewater in that area when we get to those phases. So it all goes hand in hand. And it's the concept of natural attenuation. By restoring and improving these water bodies, it will help attenuate the nitrogen pollution and make it so that the overall cost of wastewater is lower.
More or less, I guess they're not part of the wastewater, the humongous project. They're doing this on the sidelines with your or the town's approval. That's all I wanted to know. I didn't want to know a whole history.
Great. Great. Well, thank you. Question?
Yes, Christine Greeley.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have a question on C. This thing that Mr. Saban just did a presentation on, the $3 million bonding. I mean, we are being asked to turn ourselves into pretzels over a project that is costing, as he acknowledged, $10.6 million. And I remember that figure, I think, being mentioned at the very beginning, which would have included the, I don't know, two- or three-mile boardwalk to Smuggler's Beach. Now, apparently, all that we can do for that same amount is the little circle there somewhere that will probably be knocked down the next time a good hurricane comes along.
Is there a question?
No, I mean, yeah, that's not a question. I just think it's very unfortunate that when we're dealing with such a humongous project as the wastewater project, we have these millions-of-dollar projects also coming along. I just wish that we could put something like that off.
Okay.
Because this is not going to produce any revenue for us. It's all... In fact, it will require the services of a maintenance person.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Question?
Yes, Christine Greeley, I actually, sort of to follow with that. My question was, I think I was shocked to discover that the total cost of the project is $10 million, and we're just simply funding the $3 million tonight with this. Where is the additional... One of my questions is, where is the additional funding? Obviously, another $6 million, this is only one-third of that project, coming from. And then, secondly, when it is finally constructed, I'm assuming there's going to be some major maintenance and policing costs when you've got bathrooms and everything else down there. Where will that then appear in the town budget? And what kinds of costs will that be costing us to then maintain this facility and the area down there? Thank you.
Thanks. Kathy?
Kathy Williams, Town Planner. The overall project is $10.6 million, but we already have approximately $6 million in funding for it. Previous CPA allocations, as well as a $956,000 Land Water Conservation Fund grant and a $1 million Seaport Economic Development Grant, a DCR park grant. So what we asked for earlier in Article 16 was for half a million dollars in free cash. So what we asked for earlier in Article 16 was for half a million dollars in free cash, what we're asking for, and this article is $3 million in existing in-the-bank FY24 undesignated CPA funds. I just want to point out that CPA funds can only be used for historic preservation, affordable housing, open space, and recreation. Those are the only things that those funds can, can go for. In the next article, we are also looking for supplemental $3 million bond authorization, which would be that we could bond against future revenue, uh, from the CPA funds. Okay. And I could just fit, okay?
Oh, yeah. No, I'm sorry.
I mean, I was just gonna say, with regard to maintenance, um, you're right. Obviously, when you create a new facility, you're gonna have additional maintenance costs, and there has been some estimates that have been developed. But there's also the potential for various revenue sources from this project. We have, um, the ability to engrave and sell planks, um, and engraved, um, different benches sales, and we also have the ability, and one of the things that the, uh, the Drive-In Site Utilization Committee's been working on, is starting to develop a memo to meet with the Board of Selectment about the possibility of having naming rights. Maybe we'll have for a periodic time, you could name the event space at the Riverwalk Park, or you could name the playground, or you could name the kayak launch and allow for additional funding to come in there. But in addition, the special events that are being held there, even now, when we don't really have any amenities to offer them, we are still getting funding from that. Uh, last year, we had the carnival and received about $15,000 for a weekend use of that property.
Okay. What department will, um, the maintenance and care and everything of this then fall under?
It's gonna be Parks. Thank you.
Question?
Hi, I'm Sarah Thornington, Precinct Six. My question is about the boardwalk park, the open grassland where it is on marsh area. Um, I just want to make sure that someone's taken into account not that we won't be using fertilizers and pesticides and all those things right on our marsh.
Yep. On this property or the next property?
On the next property.
The park, yeah.
On the green park.
Yep. One of the whole parts of the project is, is an ecological restoration of the entire site, removal of invasive species, and planting of a lot of new native vegetation. Um, right now, the site, if you can move to the next slide, which shows the part, yeah. Um, right now, I think everyone who's been out there knows what it looks like. There's not, there's not a lot of vegetation there. Uh, it's been something that's been left like this in situation for decades and decades and decades. We want to restore and help heal that. So there's a lot of ecological restoration going on as well. Thank you.
Okay. Hearing, uh, we'll take a vote. I think, all in favor? All in favor? Right? All opposed? Motion carries. Article 33.
Mr. Moderator, Joanne Crowley, member of the Community Preservation Committee. I move Article 33, uh, as printed in the warrant.
Uh, Board of Selectmen, second?
Board of Selectmen recommends unanimously.
Finance Committee recommends three to two.
Community Preservation Committee recommends. This article authorizes the town treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow up to $3 million for the construction of the Riverwalk Park, Boardwalk Loop, and event space, space infrastructure located at 669 Route 28, the former drive-in site, and a portion of the unnumbered lot to the south. Although new for Yarmouth, many other Massachusetts communities have found bonding CPA projects to be a valuable tool to fund larger community projects. These borrowed funds will be paid back using future anticipated CPA receipts. At this point, I'd like to hand over the, further explanation, again, to Jim Sabin, Chairman of the Site Utilization Committee.
Thank you, Joanne. Could I have slide four, please? So as we've already presented, this project has been a long time in the making, and will finally make an underutilized town property and create a destination location with many benefits to our community. To be sure we can make this project happen, we need to know we have enough funds to secure now to award a construction contract this fall while we continue to pursue other potential funding opportunities. Article 33 is seeking authorization from town meeting to bond up to, up to, $3 million in CPA funds. Oh, next slide, please. Slide, thank you. Sorry about that. Uh, CPA bonding allows for borrowing for larger projects just like this one, which can be paid back over time, secured by future CPA revenues. Many other communities, including a number of Cape Towns, have used this valuable tool already. CPA funding is limited to projects, as stated before, related to affordable housing, historic, open space, and recreation. A minimum of 10% of annual CPA revenues must go to housing, historic, and open space buckets. The rest going into an undesignated category, which can be used for any of these purposes plus recreation. The proposed CPA bond of $3 million will be paid back over 10 years at an estimated 5% interest using the future CPA undesignated funds. The CPA revenues increase annually with a range, with a range of about $2 million to $2.6 million over the next 10 years. Concurrently, the debt service on the bond decreases from about $450,000 to $315,000 over the same 10-year period. As seen in the chart, significant undesignated funds, the green area, significant undesignated funds remain available. Even with this bonding authorization, other CPA eligible projects will still be avail, will still be able to move forward. Additionally, there will also be a carryover of $910,000 in open space funding and $860,000 in undesignated funds from the FY24, even with all the CPA articles approved at this town meeting. There's still money left over. Not authorizing the fund would be a huge setback in the project, which could, which, as I said before, would cause delays, ultimately resulting in increased project costs due to inflation, pending regulatory changes, and redesign and re-permitting of the project. We also risk, risk losing over $2 million in other grants awarded for the project if we delay. Uh, slide six. Now is the time for this project. It has been planned and vetted for years, and I mean years. This started in 1986. We ask that you vote for the funding needed to make this project happen and create the recreational asset that was envisioned back in 1986 when we stood here in this town, uh, in this town meeting and voted to purchase this property. You've shown your support for this project many times before. I ask that you continue to show that support and vote yes in this article. Thank you very much.
Before we take questions or comments, Joanne? Is Joanne still there? The motion has to be read into the record.
Did you vote in favor of supporting 34?
Yeah. What?
Six to one.
Waste of time here.
So I thought, okay, and same with 35.
Yeah. Sorry. Thank you, Kathy.
Is it because it's a bond?
Article 33, the motion as follows. Move that the town appropriate $3 million for the construction of a Riverwalk Park, Boardwalk Loop, and event space infrastructure at 669 Route 28, former drive-in site, and a portion of the unnumbered lot to the south, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow such amount pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Paragraph 7, dash, 1, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, the Community Preservation Act, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. And further authorizes the Board of Selectmen to apply for and accept any and all state aid, grants, or other revenue source that may become available for this work, and that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out the project.
Thank you. We'll have a second.
Second.
Okay. Questions, sir?
Eight. I would just like to, uh, ask the Finance Committee why they voted unanimously for the previous Project C appropriating $3 million, yet two of the members of the Finance Committee did not vote for this article borrowing the money or appropriating it.
Uh, thank you for the question. Uh, the Finance Committee had a robust discussion about, uh, this entire project, and, uh, it was felt, uh, one of the concerns that has been raised is, uh, around the, uh, future revenues, uh, and, uh, making sure that there is a good, um, business case coming forward, uh, as well as, uh, what, uh, bonding this, uh, future amount does to, uh, the availability of future funds for community preservation, uh, to be spent on other needed issues, particularly in the height of a housing crisis. Uh, that is the reasoning, uh, behind the, the difference in the vote. Uh, happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Ma'am?
I was similarly curious about that, but I also have another question. I think in the prior, um, explanation...
Did you identify? I don't know if you identified yourself.
Sorry. My name is Sue Cameron, and I live at 20 Fessenden Street.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
Um, in the previous article, uh, we were told that the full $10 million is already available if, as long as that previous article allocated the $3 million. So I'm kind of confused about why we're now, um, needing to bond another $3 million. Thank you.
Kathy Williams, Town Planner. I believe I said that the next article would be asking for the bonding, so we need the, we need the, um, the full 6.5 that's on the, uh, some three different warrant articles this evening.
Okay, thank you. Sir?
Uh, yeah, Norm Holcomb again. Uh, question for, uh, our town administrator. Um, if we have a problem here, and it's a good problem, that is, revenues go crazy because the site is so attractive that we have all kinds of events going on and we have money just flowing into the town. What assurance do we have that those revenues will be designated specifically to cover the operating costs and the debt service, uh, for the Riverwalk Park? There's nothing in this article that says that those revenues, it says in fact, uh, the town is authorized, uh, to accept any and all state aid, grant, and other revenue, but it doesn't say that it will be restricted for the use of the Riverwalk Park. Can anybody comment on that?
Any federal grants or state grants that are received pursuant to this authorization will be used for the construction of the park solely. There is nothing that restricts any potential, uh, future revenues for any municipal purpose, and, and that's governed by, uh, the Massachusetts General Laws as, as well it should be. I, I think what was stated by the proponents of the article was that, um, it is very likely that the events that are held at this could generate more than sufficient income that would flow into the general fund to then be used to maintain the park. The parks are maintained by the Parks Department. That comes through the town's normal financing.
I guess I would like to, I have written down an amendment, Mr. Moderator. And I'm not sure that I can remember it before I pass it over to you, but it would add on after the, uh, becomes available for the work, and I would add on, and which will be designated specifically for the construction or operating costs of the, of the Riverwalk Park. Uh, so that that would, by that wording, restrict, uh, not only the grants, but any revenue, uh, specifically to the, uh, the operating costs and, and so forth of the park.
Mr. Moderator, I would just question whether you, you can't use CPA funds for operating funds. This is simply for, um, the construction of the facility, so you can't use for CPA for maintenance or operation.
I'm not talking about CPA funds. I'm talking about the revenues. Any revenues that are generated under this article would go into the general fund. And what I'm, uh, instead, uh, asking for an amendment that would specifically designate those revenues to be set aside for the operating costs of the Riverwalk Park.
Mr. Moderator, if I may, Jay Tallerman, Town Counsel. Norm, I, I love the thought of that, but that, we can't just do that through a town meeting article. If, if town meeting wanted to create, say, a revolving fund or some kind of other special purpose fund, we could do that, but by a warrant article, we can't designate certain revenue that by law would go into the general fund. Those would be special purpose funds that would require, uh, an actual action of town meeting that's outside the scope of this. It's, it's certainly an accepted way of dealing with that, but that's not what is set up currently. So by law, it would be general fund money until under another article and some other town meeting created, like, say, again, a, a Parks revolving fund for this specific purpose. So we couldn't do that by fiat in this warrant article.
I hear you. I hear you, and I'm, I'm disappointed that that has not been looked at by the Select Board and by the town administrator. I think that should have been looked into so that, uh, the, the operation of the Riverwalk Park is supported, uh, in full by the revenues, and none of the revenues are set aside for any other purpose.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no further questions, hearing no further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
It passes by a two-thirds majority. Thank you. Article 34, petition article, to be presented by Haley O'Neil.
Hello, everyone. I'm a year-round resident of Yarmouth, working in the restaurant industry. I am also a member, oh, next slide, please.
You're gonna make a motion.
What'd you say?
Make the motion.
Uh, motion to add this?
You're gonna make the motion.
I would like to make a motion to add the plastic reduction article to the town bylaw. Oh.
Yes. Oh, God, Jesus.
Okay, so I would like to amend my, the language in your warrant. Um, I motion to amend the article as printed in the warrant for these changes, the effective date. I amend the article effective dates from September 1st, 2024, to January 1st, 2025. I amend the prohibition to include public and private schools, educational institutions, summer camps, childcare facilities, and other program, childcare programs approved to participate in the USDA child nutrition programs are exempt. I amend the definition of prepared food to remove beverages. Prepared food means any food prepared for consumption on the food establishment's premises using any cooking or food preparation technique. This does not include any raw or uncooked meat, fish, or eggs unless provided for consumption without further food preparation.
We have a motion as amended. Do we have a recommendation from the Select Board?
Somebody second it.
Mr. Moderator, the Select Board vote is one member in favor and four members against.
Finance Committee?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee, uh, votes three in favor and two against.
Okay.
Point of order, point of order, Mr. Moderator. Point of order, Mr. Moderator.
I don't, I, I didn't hear, where's that coming from?
From Norm.
Right here. Um, is the amendment being proposed by a town resident?
Yes.
Yes. I'm a town resident.
Yeah. Absolutely. Explanation now, or presentation? Hold your questions.
Could you please go back to the beginning of the presentation? Thank you. Sorry about that. So I'm just gonna start over. My name is Haley O'Neil. I'm a year-round resident of Yarmouth, working in the restaurant industry. I'm also a member of Sustainable Practices, an environmental advocacy organization with members in each Cape Town. We work together to promote the well-being of our environment and communities. I joined this group because of my growing concern for the environment and my need to participate in finding a solution to the issues that we collectively face. Plastic is the issue of the day. In spite of the fact that much research has been conducted and articles written about the harmful impacts of plastic, there has been little action to address the plastic pollution problem. An article from this Sunday's New York Times entitled "Our Way of Life is Poisoning Us" notes the following: There is plastic in our bodies. It's in our lungs, in our bowels, and in the blood that pulses through us. We can't see it, we can't feel it, but it is there. With this quote in mind, I'd like you to, I'd like to provide the rationale for Article number 34, the plastic reduction article. Single-use plastic... Single-use plastic is a local, national, and global issue. A study published in the journal Nature Sustainability analyzed 12 million pieces of litter collected from oceans, rivers, shorelines, the seafloor, and open waters. Researchers found that 80% of items were plastic, and nearly half, 44%, were takeout materials. Estimates are that there will be more plastic by fish by weight in the oceans by 2050 if our behavior does not change. Plastic comprises of 80% of beach trash on Cape Cod. The economic cost of plastic pollution affecting tourism, fisheries, shipping sectors, and shipping sectors are estimated to be at least $8 billion annually, based off of 2019 findings. Next slide, please. Takeout boxes and containers make up a considerable part of municipal solid waste. Takeout food containers are responsible for nearly one-third of greenhouse gas emissions related to single-use plastics. These points highlighted the production and disposal impacts. Often what is neglected is the consumption impacts. Next slide, please. Takeout containers are made from heat-resistant, flexible plastic derived from petroleum. The majority continue, continue to contain phthalates and bisphenol A, BPA. Both have been linked to health issues. BPAs are directly linked to breast cancer, and on this image, you can see the life cycle of plastic as well. Next slide, please. Plastic is a human and environmental health hazard. Plastic can contain thousands of possible additives. Manufacturers are not required to disclose what is in their products. Any plastic can leach, depending on the conditions, light, heat, and what additives it includes. Chemicals in plastic have been tied to cardiovascular disease, reproductive disorders, obesity, and developmental disorders. Next slide. What, when you eat your food in plastic containers, microplastics can enter the food, and this increases when it is hot, but it still happens when you're even eating a cold item. Next slide, please. As I mentioned earlier, microplastics have been found in our bodies. This image reveals all the different locations microplastics have been found and some of the health effects tied to plastic. If there's one thing that you should take away from this presentation, it is that plastic is a human health hazard. After consumption, the disposal of plastic is problematic as well. Next slide, please. Plastic recycling is a myth. Most single-use plastic is not recycled. Takeout containers are not always recyclable. Of the 8 billion tons of plastic manufactured since the 1950s, less than 10% has been recycled. Recycled plastic does not end up in a closed loop. New virgin plastic is needed. In, in other words, recycled plastic does not return to its original form without virgin plastic added to it. Most recycled plastic is downcycled into products that will eventually be landfilled. I have provided a small bit of information about the hazards of plastic. I hope you will take the opportunity to learn more about this on your own, and now I will share the proposed bylaw. Next slide, please. Except as provided herein, food establishments are prohibited from dispensing prepared food to customers in disposable food service containers and utensils made from plastic. This is the same for town facility users. This bylaw shall take effect on January 1st, 2025. Next slide, please. This bylaw includes a fine structure and a process for enforcement. Next slide, please. This article does reduce the amount of plastic in our communities, environment, recycling facilities, and landfills. It increases awareness of the human health impacts of single-use plastic and encourages the use of reusables. This article does not ban all single-use containers, and it does not require customers to bring their own containers or utensils. Next slide, please. What will this look like in practice? Food establishments that use single-use plastic products for dining may opt to return to reusables. Food establishments may opt to use single-use containers made of other materials for takeout as they transition away from plastic. Ideally, food establishments adopt a closed-loop reuse system. Next slide, please. This image shows how a closed-loop reuse system works, and actions are currently being taken towards this goal. Just yesterday, Care for Cape and Islands announced that they received a grant that will help to expand the use of sustainable alternatives to single-use food and serviceware, including exploring the potential for a reusable serviceware program to transition businesses away from single-use plastic. Their executive director, Jill Taladde, is also the Yarmouth Recycling and Solid Waste Advisory Committee's co-chair. I'm optimistic that, given the relationship between Yarmouth Recycling Committee and Care, they will be in support of this article I am presenting, and hopefully these funds could be the basis for a more sustainable system to be used in Yarmouth. Next slide, please. I know that change does not happen overnight, so this is my proposed timeline. Single-use plastic restrictions are increasing due to the dangers of plastic to our health and our environment. Right now, food establishments can begin transition, the transition by using up their existing inventory of plastic, and moving into 2024, food establishments would fully switch to non-plastic alternatives, so that they would be prepared when the plastic reduction article goes into effect January 1st, 2025. After, we would hope that a closed-loop reuse system would be fully adopted. This timeline depicts how food establishments can adopt the plastic reduction article in the time permitted. And, next slide. These are the amendments that I just spoke on. I'm asking you to vote yes on this article because plastic is a human health hazard and should not be in our food or our environment. Thank you.
I can't get it right now. It's in my phone. Thank you. Questions? Comments? I'll start with that gentleman.
Son. Bill Weston, Precinct 8. The question in Article 34 seems to be misdirected. Our waste stream here in Yarmouth, as well as many other Cape Towns, goes to the incinerator and is not landfilled, so there's a lot of reference in the question about going to a landfill. I have a question on what is the cost of implementation and enforcement of this proposed article?
Haley? Well, for the first comment that you made, when plastics are incinerated, basically what ends up happening is you just end up breathing that in, which can cause lots of health impacts.
Excuse me. Do you mean the cost to the providers?
The overall cost to implement this article.
Yeah, I just.
However the cost may be, you know, borne out.
I want, just keep us on track to your question. Yes. Okay.
So you're asking me the cost for people to switch over from non-plastic?
The cost to implement this proposed article.
The cost?
Both implementing it and enforcing it.
So the enforcement cost, I believe, would go, I can't answer that question. Maybe I could pass that to the moderator, but in terms of implementing the system, this could be a cost-saving point, savings point for restaurants if they were to use, if they're right now using disposable products when people are dining in, switching to reusables would save them money because they're not constantly repurchasing these products. With plastic takeout silverware could also be a cost savings point for them. They could sell their own silverware, or they could not offer plastic silverware to people, or charge an additional cost for the bamboo ones that they could offer instead.
So as a tourist community, we invite hundreds of thousands of visitors to our town every year, and now we're telling them it's gonna cost more to have their seafood plate, and it's gonna cost the restaurateurs more. I just, I, I'm not in support of the article, and because of several reasons that I have, I'd like to make a motion to postpone this article indefinitely.
Second it.
Discussion? The motion has been made and seconded to postpone the article.
I think at least we should let the people who are in line with our needs or the article.
We need conversation focused on the motion. If, question over here.
I don't have a question. I have, I have a comment.
You have to speak to the motion, which is to postpone.
And it is regarding the, so I, if it's postponed, I would like to say, my name is Liz Argo. I'm 279 Setucket. We've done a lot of good things for the, the waterways and our beaches. I walk the beaches every day, and what I pick up all day long is plastics. And there are restaurants that have already made the change. They are using paper products. It's not onerous. It can be done. I beg you not to postpone this. We didn't postpone the wastewater treatment motion. We shouldn't postpone this one either.
Sir? Take Mr. Sullivan here.
Tom Sullivan, Precinct 1, I support indefinitely postponing this. Be two years. Okay, there's a lot of unanswered questions here. A year ago, I was criticized when I made a comment, the Cape Cod Hospital is in Yarmouth. Everybody jumped on me. Turns out, even the town told me the Cape Cod Hospital is in Yarmouth, and they do plastic and plastic food service to patients. Is this gonna affect them? Sure will. It's gonna affect a lot of our restaurants because they have takeout service. Okay? Because of the COVID, a lot of the restaurants are continuing with this, including dispensing a beverage or two. This will have a serious effect. The beaches, somebody goes to the beaches, you think you're gonna bring silverware? Bring your finest. No, they're not. They're gonna bring plastic. This needs to be indefinitely postponed for two years. Thank you.
Couple, couple more? We're not gonna spend all night on postponement.
Yeah.
Sir, go ahead.
Bita Morris. I am in favor of postponement, and I think the time should be used to educate the public a little better instead of issuing a dictat with the force of a bylaw immediately. We, we just need more discussion, I think, on this. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, am I allowed to comment?
What?
Am I allowed to comment?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I am not in support of indefinitely postponing this. The time for these changes is now. This would give restaurants a year and eight months to make these changes. Plastic is directly linked to cancer. The more, the longer that we wait, the more at risk we are becoming. We're eating more, we eat a credit card's worth of plastic a week. Alternatives already exist out there. Restaurants are already using them. Indefinitely postponing this is not, it is not a solution. Education does not work the same way that putting in a ban does.
I'm gonna take a vote on postponement, because it's a, it's sort of a yes or no. I'm gonna take a vote. All in favor of postponing, as moved, please say aye and raise your card.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
The motion is not postponed. So we're back to questions. Sir, the, I don't know who's standing closer to the microphone. The man with the hat.
I think I was here first.
Yeah.
So, well, I'm glad we're not postponing this. I'm Jim Wolfe. I live over on Goose Neck Road over that side. My job at Cape Air, where I work, I am the Sustainability Director, and I, I've gone over the plastic thing many, many times at work, and a couple things we noticed. First of all, we noticed that the plastic bottles, the, just the ones that you use once, that the amount of oil that goes into them to make them is like 300 times as much oil as Cape Air burns in a year, and they're unnecessary. And so because of that, we decided no single-use water bottles at Cape Air. And we solved that problem quite easily. We said there's tap water in the town that is certified drinkable, and we put some purifiers in maybe so it tasted a little bit better. This is at Hyannis. And everybody adopted to that. Now.
I appreciate, just, I appreciate your comment, but the next article is about bottles.
No, no. I, I, okay, yes, okay. So the plastic issue and putting it off. We, we spent a lot of time at this meeting talking about 200-plus million dollars just for the first phase to fix a problem that we could have recognized quite a bit earlier. This problem is very recognized, and unbelievably great presentation, young lady.
Thank you.
And, you know, the people who come to vacation here, they're paying that room tax. I mean, we are, we are already making them pay more money to get here. Let's say to them, we're a town that doesn't want to use plastic. I don't think they're gonna object to it.
Okay.
So that's, that's what I think.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ma'am?
Rose Kaplan of 14 Evergreen Street. I basically agree completely with the last commenter, and I have a few comments to add as well. So we, we all know, there, it's no secret that the production, the use, and the disposal of plastic is a huge issue that is likely to become our next wastewater crisis, as you mentioned. And now this is our chance to act proactively, and instead of dealing 60 years into the future when this is an enormous crisis even bigger than it already is, we can take steps to act now. And as we've talked about, Yarmouth being a green community, you know, doing all these environmental projects, having hybrid vehicles, this is another way that we can be leaders in that area of sustainability. You know, in the town of Yarmouth itself, black plastic, the quintessential takeout container, is not accepted for recycling and therefore will just be incinerated, which does not solve the problem of toxic chemicals, cancer exposure, and, you know, all the other problems that I think we know plastic poses. And it, it's already costing the town and town businesses, myself, many people I know, and a growing number of Yarmouth residents and Cape Codders are already making these decisions in our consumer choices. Like, in the past week, I've chosen not to eat at certain Yarmouth restaurants because I know that I'll be getting plastic, and instead choosing other options in other towns that provide the already available non-plastic takeout options. So I urge us all, we've done a great job passing the wastewater article tonight. I think we should all continue in that line and pass the plastic reduction bylaw as well.
Thank you very much. Sir?
George Mendoza, 15 Payne Road. I'm against this proposition, and first thing I would like to ask you all, okay, the hypocrisy, take out your shirt and look at your tag in your shirt. Look at your shoes. Look at your glasses. Look at your shirts. We're talking about plastic in a bad way, and plastic is all over us, okay? We use it every day. Also, plastic is used in medicine. All our hospitals use plastic. IB cams in plastic. Syringes are made of plastic. Okay? Plastic plays a lot of good services in our, in our society. But burdening businesses in a town, for example, the town of Yarmouth passes out statements on the water, the water quality that we drink, okay? The water in our tabs is polluted. It's more polluted than if you're drinking out of a plastic bottle. Till the town can solve the problems of our polluted water, I suggest that we don't ban plastic containers for water because it's not gonna, what are we gonna do? Go buy them in Hyannis? Go buy them in Harwich? Go buy them in Dennis? Excuse me.
No.
There are phosphates, there are phosphates in the water. We get reports regularly.
No, please.
We get reports regularly when the, that the water can, can cause cancer, even in, even in showering with the steam of the water. Okay? I get them, the bus, the, 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 the town, the town of Yarmouth Water Department sends them out. I got three of them last year. If you're not reading your mail, that's your problem. Regardless, we are all covering plastic right now. Let's not be hypocrites. Punishing an industry that is being completely taxed already with the pandemic, the closures and everything else, over, over an argument over plastic, when everybody here, including the young lady, and this young lady who just spoke, is wearing plastic. All your clothes are made, made out of plastic.
Thank you.
So, no, I'm not finished.
Well.
I'm not finished.
Just try to compress the point.
I'm compressing what I'm saying. The hypocrisy. There is, there's an environmental argument, okay? And everyone here is wearing plastic. So to decide that we're gonna punish the food industry, okay, all the vessels in which we carry water around, water around, okay, when the water that's provided to us by the town is not drinkable, okay? It's a hypocrisy, plain and simple. And this young lady will not be able to run a business by herself tomorrow if she wanted to with all these restrictions that cost thousands and thousands of dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Daniel Reek, Precinct 1, Precinct 8, I think. So I understand and support the intent. I'm still against this motion because simply we don't need more regulation. We have heard from the lady that spoke in this spot before me and from the gentleman from Cape Air what the right answer is, because both of them showed us that voluntary action can make the change. Cape Air got rid of water bottles. The lady that spoke before me is not going to restaurants that do- The lady that spoke before me is not going to restaurants that do plastic. If we all do that, do public pressure, use market force, we can achieve the same thing much faster and we do not have to create more regulation with all the consequences and unintended consequences of that.
Thank you very much. Sir?
David Bernstein, Two West Area Road, West Yarmouth, Precinct Six. I want to make two comments. Comment number one is, I'm not sure what the gentleman who was standing here before me was talking about shirts and things like that. That's not within the purview of this bylaw. So let's focus on the bylaw. If people read it, it's very reasonable. Number two is, somebody earlier stood up and talked about the future of Yarmouth and our, our grandchildren and children. Here we have a young woman who's speaking up about plastics, something that's going to affect her and her kids and my grandchildren. So I urge you to vote yes. Thank you.
Ma'am, on this side, thank you.
Hi, I'm Carol Lamson. I'm Bent Bluff Lane, Precinct Six, and I want to thank this young woman for bringing this proposed amendment up. I am enthusiastically in favor of it. The oceans are choked with plastic. It's sprayed all over our beaches. Everyone who's ever done a beach cleanup knows that. This will not solve all the problems of excess single-use plastic. It's a small step with a generous lead time. I mean, a year and eight months is plenty of time to burn through existing inventory at the restaurants we have. There are lots of really good alternatives, cardboard boxes, the potato starch implements. Many, many cities have already done this all across the U.S. I definitely think we should do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Hi, good evening. Tracy Poe, South Yarmouth. I'd like to hear a little bit about how the select board came to their position on this article. I noticed that they voted against it. I'd like to hear why. I'd also like to hear from the Chamber of Commerce and whether or not the Recycling and Solid Waste Committee has taken a position on this article.
Okay. Do you want to respond?
Yeah, well, for the Chamber of Commerce, I met with them and that is why I changed the date from September 24th to January 20, 2025. And I also met with the Recycling Committee. I was there to answer any questions that they had. Yeah, that's it. They did not tell me their, their stance, but this would make their, we would have less problems for recycling because as most of you probably know, the Recycling Committee did an educational thing where they were trying to tell us, hey, don't recycle your black plastic, it's not recyclable. And yet, if you go there now, you can still, when you look in, you can still see black plastic. Yeah. But, so I would assume that they're in support, but I do not know for sure now.
Yes, ma'am. I'll go to you.
Sarah Thornington, District Six. I am a beach cleaner. I have a little project going where I've probably single-handedly picked up almost 40,000 pieces of plastic off our beaches. Many of them are takeaway containers. I am in full support of this program. Couple of reasons. I mean, it's brilliant, but plastic contributes to climate change every single step of its journey, from the production of it being made by petroleum all the way through until when it's incinerated and letting off toxins into our air. You know, we need to do something now. The gentleman, a couple of people before me, said that we don't need more regulations, but that's exactly what we need. People by themselves are not going to make these changes. Everywhere I go, people are drinking out of plastic bottles. They don't even think twice about getting takeout containers. So until our towns and our governments and people who can actually make a difference stand up and protect our planet, we're in kind of a tough strait. So I am in full support of this and I hope that many of you are too.
Thank you. Sir, take a few more.
Uh, my name is.
And again, I guess I'd like to caution, appreciate all the comments, but try to keep your comments to something that maybe hasn't been said before. And, and again, I don't want to dissuade your support or non-support of something, but you'll have a chance to vote on that, you know, with your, your vote. So we're trying to consolidate the comments. And I don't mean this directed towards whatever you're going to say.
Mike Davis, 311 Route 28. As a small business owner of a restaurant, it's, I understand where the movement of green is going towards. I mean, we're educated on that pretty consistently as restaurateurs. We're getting pushed by our vendors to say, you know, this is where things are heading. And we understand that, we're not blind to it. However, being in the society and the way our economic structure is set up, it's still our choice to choose whether or not we use paper, plastic, if we want to use the cornstarch-based, you know, things that are coming out, there's a lot of different alternatives. I understand that. But what this amendment is doing is literally taking away your ability as a restaurateur to choose to do something. And what I want to use as cost to myself versus a lot of, you know, bigger corporations that make, you know, far much more money than what my business does, it's, it will impact us even though I understand the economic, like the environmental impact of what plastics has done. I get it. I'm not, like, I'm 30 something years old and I fully understand where the future of this is going. However, this amendment just restricts us as business owners to limiting what we can and can't do. And I understand the hypocrisy of going back and forth about this. But it's still, at the end of the day, we should be able to choose as business owners what we want and what not to do. If that girl who decided not to go to those restaurants who didn't serve, you know, sustainable plastic or sustainable silverware, then we should also have that choice to choose to do that if we so do so. So I'm just against the amendment for that reason.
Thank you very much. Ma'am?
Hi, Charlie O'Neil, 51 Cove Road. As the gentleman before me just stated, education has been provided to people. Vendors are telling restaurant owners to change the way they're doing things for a long time now. They have not. That's why this ban isn't going into place because they have not taken the opportunity to do this on their own. So that's why we feel this ban needs to take place because we're moving towards a greener future. That's the future we all want to be a part of. Why don't we do it together as Yarmouth? Our, our tourists can pay an extra tax, an extra fee to take on this convenience, a pure convenience. So I vote please say yes.
Thank you. Sir?
Scott Winger, 23 Dundee Drive. When I'm handed cardboard or bamboo or cornstarch containers and a wooden fork, that's a classy sign and that's where the future is going. And it takes a unified approach and it speaks very well for our community to put that as a foot forward to the visitors. Strongly in favor. I encourage us to unite behind it.
Thank you very much. Sir?
Hi, hi there. Ian Bragdon, 24 Fairway Road. I'm actually a fishing captain, both recreationally and commercially. All I drive by going about 25 miles an hour is plastic. Just whatever you're picturing now, triple it. I cover a lot of miles that no one will ever see in their entire lifetime. 15 miles, 35, 55 miles offshore, I've found plastic everywhere. We have to do something about it. Obviously, I'm strongly for this amendment. Also, I, I heard people mentioning the cost. Well, I think the true cost is us not being able to, you know, both my parents, grandparents, excuse me, lived on Cape Cod till they're 96. I'd love to get, you know, three quarters of that age. It'd be great if we got toxic materials out of our society. So the true cost, you know, in terms of everything, I feel like everybody's been raising their costs. Tuna charters, fish prices, seafood prices, you know, tackle prices, everything's increasing. So a small dollar or two for bamboo or whatever the material may be, a more sustainable approach, I think, yeah, the people will pay for it. They, they definitely will. So, thank you.
Thank you. Go, a few more.
Could I make a comment, Mr. Moderator? Could I just make a comment to some of the things that have been said?
The what?
A comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to also clarify that, like the gentleman, a couple of people before, a small restaurant business owner, he's, this is to protect the people. I know that it's limiting your choices, but that is for the protection of the people. And also, when someone talked about all of our clothes being plastic, I know, and that, that is an issue too, but at least you're not like chewing on your clothes like you are a plastic fork. Also, the cost difference, I know I probably shouldn't say statements like this, but I really don't believe that this could make or break a business. A Styrofoam clamshell versus a paper-based clamshell, the price cost is 10 cents. So this cost could be put onto the customer. Like we know, people are willing to pay a lot of money for takeout. They pay, they use Grubhub, Uber Eats, whatever, it's like $20 more just to get it delivered. I do not think that this will negatively impact any business in the way that people are saying that it will.
Thank you. We'll take a few more. Again, try to keep it to something that hasn't been said.
Tom Sullivan again. I think we got a defective bylaw here. Under administration and enforcement, the bylaw is enforced by the town administrator and any committee appointed by them. Any food establishment or town facility user which violates any provisions of the bylaw shall be subject to the following penalty. Since when did the town administrator be an enforcer of any bylaw in the town of Yarmouth?
I could answer this question for you, sir. It's saying that the town administrator would appoint the committee who would be the enforcer so they could commit, appoint the health department or the board of health, whoever he chooses that would be best, the best fit for this.
Well, I'd like to answer that back. Here in the town of Yarmouth, by charter, the appointments are made by the board of selectmen, not the town administrator. That's a defect. Appointments are made by the town and committees are appointed by the board of selectmen. They're the policymakers here in the town of Yarmouth. The town administrator is an administrator. So you don't have that in here.
Well, it is on town floor, so that means that it has been looked over by the town lawyers, correct?
But it doesn't, it doesn't call for this board of selectmen to appoint anything. It is the town administrator. And if the town administrator does not appoint, it's the selectman. Selectmen make appointments to all the committees in town, including the board of health and every other committee we've heard here tonight. It goes to the board of selectmen. This is a defective warrant.
If there's a flaw, could we amend it right now?
She has to put it in writing and amend it.
Should we amend it on the floor?
No, she has to be put it in writing to the, and it hasn't been done.
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator? Who's here?
Yeah, go ahead.
It, it's not a flaw. It's perfectly legal. I'm not taking a position on it and I'm not speaking for the select board. I'm just to, there's been a legal question. It's not a flaw. They can name the town administrator. The town administrator under the bylaw could appoint a committee. The bylaw provides that authority. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Go ahead, sir, again.
Once again, Bill Weston, Precinct Eight. One of the issues I have is if people want to make a personal choice, whether to use plastics or not, I think that's great about anything they want to make a personal choice on. However, I'm not so enthusiastic to turn a personal choice into a government mandate for everybody. I think it's unreasonable to do that. People are free to make their own choices on a daily basis on what they eat, where they go, what they do, but when you start turning it into a government mandate, that's where I take exception.
Okay, thank you. We'll take two more on this side.
Thank you. Maria Morasco, Pleasant Street. I had a question for the, for the young lady. Does this article extend to the deliveries to the restaurant owners specifically oil or other food products delivered to the, to the restaurant?
No. So this would just cover like food that is prepared at the restaurant has to be packaged in non-plastic materials. So something that's packaged outside of our town and not in the restaurant can be delivered in plastic packaging. That's fine. It's not covered. Even like if there's a plastic, something that's in plastic that was prepared elsewhere and shipped to the food establishment or town facility, that would be allowed because it was packaged elsewhere.
Okay, so I'm also the vice chairman of the Community and Economic Development Committee in the town and I, unfortunately, this matter was not previously presented to our committee, so I'm speaking on my own behalf. My concern is that we just passed a significant wastewater plan. We also just passed the second phase of our DIF. The most integral part of this Route 28 restoration project is to bring in commercial development. As you just saw, our assistant town manager used the example of a, of a restaurant expanding. Why don't we let our Community and Economic Development Committee vet this? I'm, I quite honestly am quite, I'm floored at this. I don't know, I, I looked at the warrant and I've always studied it and I really don't understand this. I have lots of questions about this. I am the first person to believe that we should be banning plastic, okay? I'm the one who picks, we, I'm one of all of you who pick it up on our beaches, who go swimming and bump into it. But rushing into this without considering the consequences to our restaurant owners, to the $200 million plan plus that we all just approved to bring in commercial development, which we know should be restaurants primarily because we are a tourist destination, without a thorough vetting of this would put a damper just because we don't have enough information on our ability to attract restaurateurs, to attract our tourists and to put this in its proper place in the context of being a responsible community who puts every aspect of what our selectmen have been trying to achieve. And our town, I want to applaud our town administrator and assistant town administrator and our planners for being forward-thinking. This is not a one-off that we should be thinking about. Please, think about the plan you just approved to bring commercial development, to send a message. So if we can table this for another year, bring the information, no, I'm, bring the information that is missing to the appropriate committees that you have designated in town, I think you will all think that you've done a better, made a wise decision. So take time out, think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, over this side and then.
Sharon Weimer, Precinct Seven. And I have a good friend that has a great mind and was sitting with me and asking a question but didn't want to come to the microphone. I know Tracy has asked the selectmen why they came to their opinion, but it is fascinating to me to know, as the woman spoke about prior, of the extensive cost associated with 18 and the movement they were all doing. And the reason for it was PFAC, I guess, I, I'm not sure if I got the initials right, but, so that's plastic in our water. And in fact, if I'm not mistaken, and maybe the selectmen can confer, that two wells in the town of Yarmouth were closed because of the level of the plastics in the wells. If that isn't evidence enough of the need to do something and this single plastic bottle came up two years ago and asking us to study it again so we wouldn't pass it. So there is some merit, I think, to the young people, interestingly enough, that have all spoken here at the committee about the sea, the beaches, most of them young. There are a few middle-aged people there speaking too. And I think if you think about, you're paying $207 million just earlier on 18 for being, finally coming to the realization that you need to do something, and here you have evidence of two wells in Yarmouth. of two wells in Yarmouth that my friend has reminded me of that are closed because of chemicals in it. What more do you need?
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Second.
This will be the last question.
Jody Canali, precinct eight. My question is, what is the town doing for enforcement for littering and holding people accountable for this? Because we wouldn't have this issue if we did enforce that. And everyone has talked about picking it up in the water. So it's us that are the problem and we can't get to a solution like that until we start enforcing what we already have in line. What is the town doing and what steps are being taken to stop the littering?
We'll close off questioning, comments.
You have people online.
Is there anything? Did, are we hearing call the question? Not hearing it official. Someone called the question. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor of calling the question, say aye. All in favor of opposing calling a question, say aye. Okay, so we called the question. So we're ready to vote on Article 34. All in favor of the proposed amendment to the motion 34, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries by majority vote. Chris?
I, I challenge the count. Voice vote, voice vote. Could it be a physical vote?
It was, it was pretty clear, but we'll do it again. I'll do this again before we do a.
Point of order, point of order.
We have tellers. We can do this.
Point of, did we vote on the amendment or the motion?
We voted on, the motion was amended already. Yeah. It was amended by the, by the presentation. So.
Point of order, I call for a hand count vote.
Oh, yeah, okay, we'll do that. We can do that. We have people to do that. Tellers?
Yep. So folks, if you could bear with us, we're going to ask the tellers to come forward and get sworn in. They'll be assigned a section. You're all going to be asked to stand and hold your card, voter card high until the checker checks you off and walks past you. Just bear with us. You can just come forward. Have you all been assigned sections? Did Sue tell you which sections to count? Okay.
So, I'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
And then they're going to give.
We need, and we got to probably.
So, we're going to, we're going to wait for the moderator to come back.
She represented herself.
No, no, wait, wait, wait.
Blah.
Good.
She didn't come to my commission there.
Star.
But she just wanted a star.
She is.
Oh, I know.
She doesn't really have any competition.
I want to say, I think it was a recent administration.
We're just waiting for the moderator to come back. Yeah, you can go to the back.
Wasn't that close? Mike, Mike just said to me, I don't know why to hear it.
No, the, the checkers are all sworn in, so if you call for the vote, ask people to stand and hold their pink cards high, they are not going to be counted unless they're standing and their card is visible. So you can call for the vote.
Now?
Yep. They're, they're, you have to tell them, ask them to stand and, and they'll be, they're ready to count.
Did they bring them up?
The checkers came up. I swore them in. They're ready to vote.
Oh, okay. Okay, we're ready to, I guess, call for the vote.
Oh, you could, oh, I'm sorry. I had.
No, no. All in favor.
Any, please.
You want them to stand?
All in favor.
All in favor, please stand and hold up your card. It's overwhelming. Please keep standing because we've got counters with little clickers and stuff.
Make sure we get the.
Dakota's going to get them when she comes down. She's got the.
I forgot that this couldn't be done without me.
That's okay.
Remember, I'm 73 years old.
That's okay. You're good.
Thank you.
At what? Who?
Voters. Because this issue's come up like half the times. Not this one, but the next one. Do you want to make that a point like, as a comment? I mean, I can get on the floor and pick it, but.
I'm just wondering what, what about showing up for town meeting?
29. They've been told when they've been counted, they can't do it. Bruce? 46. Marcia? Where's the other gentleman?
I have no idea.
Paula? Paula?
So you get all your checkers in before you have their names, Tom?
Thank you all in advance.
You get a nickel per person, by the way.
Yeah, watch your step there.
First at five.
199 in favor, 67 opposed. The motion carries. Article, Article 35 will be presented by, oh, hold on a second. Stephanie Cox would like to just make a, a comment.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just want to make a comment, whether you voted in favor of this article or against, and the same with the next one. I just want to make a point to the audience. You know, we have a nice turnout tonight that we haven't seen in many, many years. The history of issues like these is that people will bring them up and sometimes they pass. And then six months from now, you know, at fall town meeting or the next spring town meeting, somebody brings it up to repeal it. So I would urge you all to make attendance at town meetings something that you do regularly if issues like these are important to you. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie. Article 35 petition.
All right, so I will try to keep this short and not repeat myself too much. Next slide, please. So this is the commercial single-use plastic water bottle.
Making the motion?
You've got to make a motion.
Make the motion.
Oh. I motion to, wait, could you go back to the previous slide? I'm sorry. Make the motion to see if the town will vote to adopt the following as a general bylaw and to insert it into the code of the town of Yarmouth, Massachusetts as chapter 136 and 136-1.
Can she say it's printed in the warrant? This one is, is printed in the warrant?
Yes, this article is printed in your warrant.
Do we have a second? Select Board recommendation?
Select Board, one in favor, four against.
Finance Committee?
Sorry, Finance Committee is not in favor by a vote of three to two.
Okay. Explanation?
All right. The commercial single-use plastic water bottle ban. Next slide, please. There are 50 billion plastic bottles consumed every year, about 30 billion of them in the U.S., and the majority are from the sale and distribution of water. There are 1,500 single-use plastic water bottles consumed per second in the U.S. That's 90,000 per minute. A single-use plastic water bottle is designed for one-time consumption, process that takes a few minutes. And disposal by landfill may result in a thousand years before any sign of decomposition. Plastic does not biodegrade. Next slide, please. This image shows the life cycle of plastic water bottles. PET plastic is made from fossil fuels turned into plastic bottles filled with water that are then sold in stores to be purchased and used. The majority of them will go on to be landfilled where they are polluted back into the environment by incineration, spreading toxic chemicals into the air we breathe. And few are recycled, but like I said previously, when they're recycled, they have to add new virgin plastic to create a product that is of the same standard. So it is recycling, but they still have to create new plastic. What is, next slide, please. What is in your bottled water may not be what you think it is. 45% of single-use plastic bottled water is just filtered tap water. Single-use plastic water bottles are not as regulated as our tap water. As people mentioned in previous comments, we all got notices when there was PFAS found in our water and they shut down those wells. That does not happen with plastic water bottles. And they have found PFAS in plastic wa, in the water, in plastic water bottles. Bottled water can contain undisclosed harmful chemicals and can be contaminated by the chemicals present in the plastic container in which it is held. Next slide. These are a few headlines from many articles that have addressed the safety issue with plastic bottled water. I can read them out real quick. 14 brands of bottled water were recalled for possible E. coli. The FDA knew the bottled water was contaminated, the public didn't. Plastic particles found in bottled water. The bottled water industry is not completely transparent with you. Poland Springs, for instance, not a spring at all. Their, their water is sourced from man-made springs and the company collects the water from areas in Maine like Hollis and Freiburg that are located near a former human waste dump, refuse pit, landfill, ash pile, salt mound, and toxic petroleum dump site. I'm not stating that Poland Springs' water is contaminated, but it is not sourced from a pristine spring as the company leads the consumer to believe. Next slide, please. This, as I talked previously about the effects of consuming microplastics, this picture depicts one way microplastics enter the water you drink. Simply opening and closing and squeezing the bottle increases the amount of microplastics. And then on the other hand, heat and light increase the leaching from chemicals in the plastic into your water. Next page, please. All right, so getting into the language that's in the bylaw. Effective September 1st, 2024, it shall be unlawful to sell non-carbonated, unflavored drinking water in single-use plastic bottles of less than one gallon in the town of Yarmouth. Enforcement of this regulation will begin September 1st, 2024. Next slide, please. This bylaw includes a fine structure and a process for enforcement. Next slide, please. So the status, this is an initiative also done by Sustainable Practices. After the successful adoption of the municipal plastic bottle ban across all 15 Cape Cod towns, we have supported the commercial single-use plastic water bottle ban as a citizen's petition article. To date, the commercial single-use plastic water bottle ban has been in effect in eight towns for nearly two years. Brewster, Chatham, Eastham, Falmouth, Harwich, Orleans, Provincetown, and Wellesley, all since fall of 2020. This time is now for Yarmouth to join the eight other towns and take a stand on this issue. Please vote yes on Article 35.
I'm going to ask the first question here. There's, the warrant, the warrant, I believe, has a date that's not intended.
Oh, no.
It says December 31st, 2023. Is that your proposed date?
Oh, I'm so sorry. That was me not updating my speech and presentation, but yes, the proposed date would be December 31st, 2023. We'd like for it to go into effect this year.
Okay. That's the, that's the, that's the motion. Thank you.
Seconded?
Okay. I think we already seconded the recommendations. Questions? Comments? Start with you, sir.
Governor, thank you. Daniel Rieck, Presi Point Road, precinct eight. I'm trying not to repeat what I said last time. I support this intent. I think regulation is the wrong way of approaching this. Specifically, I think the difference between the water bottles and restaurant regulation takeout containers, right? Takeout containers are highly optional, don't affect the end user as much, are easily replaced. Water bottles, and you can see the experience in towns aforementioned, are different because they directly affect the ability of people to hydrate. In result, all that happens is that single-use water bottles are replaced by multi-use water bottles that are used a single time and then discarded with actually worse effect because they are more plastic usually, right? They're stronger bottles and so on. So I strongly advise against this and recommend voluntary action instead, educating people, forcing people, forcing the shops not to sell them by not buying them and creating market pressure for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Vida Morris. First and.
First and foremost, I hope that everybody will keep in mind that we have a school district that's made up of two towns. And in the town of Dennis, they are now... They had voted to rescind the previous article on this matter, which they had adopted, but then they rescinded it. So, that's the status of it. And this year, it's very interesting that Dennis does not have either of the plastic issues on its warrants. So, from now on, I hope you keep, first and foremost, in mind that we have a school district that's made up of those two towns. Now, the only thing that is prohibited from being used in those single-use bottles is water. This is downright crazy. It's okay to use Coca-Cola, to drink Coca-Cola. It's okay to drink sugary juices or some other, or even carbonated drinks. That's fine. Just water, which is the only, the most healthy thing that one can drink. I don't understand how you can come to a conclusion like that and carry on like this. It really is beyond me. Honestly. The other thing is, I wonder if the young lady knows that... I don't think it's been suggested this time, but in the previous meetings, it was suggested that people use metal containers instead of the plastic bottles. Do you have any idea what it takes to get those metals out of the mines during the mining process? And a lot of that is being done because they are located. They are being done in Africa, where they use child labor to extract that kind of metal. So, I think that you people who are so in favor of all of this better think about that because, you know, that's another thing to think about. But anyway.
Thank you very much. Ma'am?
So, may I respond to those comments? Please, Mr. Moderator. Yeah. I was just going to say that, first off, in Dennis, it was rescinded before it ever went into effect. And that is why also it's important for you all to come to town meeting in the fall again. And then, secondly, we... This is really sad, but we wanted to do both of these initiatives in Dennis. But the person... That was the person in our group that was for the town vows way. And she was my age. But anyways, I'm not going to get into that. Anyways, aluminum is one of the most easiest recycled materials. So, yes, I'm sure some of it is coming from the mines. But at the same time, it's a good alternative because it's really easy to be recycled. And yeah, I think that's all the questions I can answer from that big spiel.
Hi, Jody Canali.
Thank you. Excuse me for a second. I didn't hear what... Did you make a motion to postpone? Is that what you... Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I didn't hear you.
Nope, I said my name. Jody Canali, Precinct 8.
Okay.
No, I hope that we vote this down. I find this is a health issue. I don't know if we've fully looked at the impact it will have in the town. Water is one of our basic things that we need all the time. In case of an emergency, we have set up all these different measures. And the first thing is, is the town will give out water. And this is allowed in an emergency, but not in our own personal emergencies. And I think that's inadequate. I think that it's kind of discrimination in that people who have health issues or diabetes or something will be forced to drink sugary drinks or something else to make them not as healthy. And I think that you're saying there has to be a gallon jug or larger, and whatever the size, some people won't be able to lift that jug. And at the beaches, people will bring different types of plastic containers. They're going to leave them all there at the beach. Our town will have to pick them up, have to get rid of them. It's going to pull on our resources as a town. If we can't have the bottled water, you're talking about your kid at school. You're talking about the tournaments. You're talking about all these things that they will not have that option to have. Firefighters out at a fire, "Sorry, we can't bring you any water unless you drink the whole jug." I really think that we should reconsider this and think about the implications on the town. Thanks.
Thank you. Sir?
David Sherlock, 24 Conservation Drive, Yarmouth Port, Precinct 7. Just wanted to say a few things here. I'll be quick. You know, we all want to do our part to reduce plastic waste, but a ban that prevents the sale of bottled water will do nothing to curb litter or improve recycling in Yarmouth. This ban will directly hurt our local retailers as consumers will simply buy their water and other items in the town next door. Someone spoke about Dennis repealing their ban. And you can go to Dennis to the east, or you can go to Barnstable to the west, and you can buy your water there. We, as Yarmouth residents, can wisely and responsibly manage our recyclable materials without having our choices taken away. A better solution is to work together to improve recycling and support our local businesses. I say, ask you to say no to the ban and yes to more choices and improved recycling. Lastly, I'm the general manager of the Coca-Cola facility here on Cape and Sandwich. I invite anybody to come into my facility. I will give you a tour of what we do on a daily basis, recycling plastic bottles. It will amaze you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Once again, Bill Weston, Precinct 8. Here we are again, using a personal preference and a special interest group agenda, trying to force government mandates. I make a motion to postpone this question indefinitely.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second? Second... Motion's been made, second? All in favor of postponement? All opposed? The motion to postpone does not carry. What was the question? You don't want another handcuff?
Point of order, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to have a handcuff.
Do we have to? Huh? We need...
Going home, are you?
To call the question? We need seven votes to call for a hand count. Do we have seven? Seven people raise their hand if you want a hand count? Three, four, five? Okay. Handcuff.
Can the tellers come forward, please? They're ready whenever you call... Tell them to stand up.
Let's start with the opposed. Do it the same way so we're consistent. Are they ready? Okay. Would all those in favor... Would all those... In favor of the motion to postpone, stand and hold up your card. Just the last one? One, five. Did it? Did it? Would all those opposed to the motion to postpone, stand up and hold your pink card? They'll count you. They'll get you. Yeah, don't worry about it. Because you can tell. I mean, the votes follow. The vote is 168 to oppose postponement, 63 to go with postponement. So, the motion to postpone fails. So, here... Seeing no other question... Is there a question back there?
I was just going to... I was just going to show people what you can do instead of having single-use plastic bottles, including if you send your child to school with one, which my two granddaughters go every day to school. They have their own water bottle, and it's not plastic. So, there are options.
Okay. Thank you.
I have just a quick comment. Rose Kaplan, 14 Evergreen, again.
We can't hear you very well.
Rose Kaplan, 14 Evergreen, just a quick comment. So, the purpose of this isn't to eliminate single-use bottles everywhere that it's sold, just plastic bottles. So, there are plastic carton alternatives, aluminum can alternatives. So, you will still be able to buy those in the town of Yarmouth in single-serving sizes or in, you know, packs of single-serving sizes. It's just the plastic, single-use bottles that will not be available. So, you can still have, like, a one-off ball. That's not a giant reusable metal tin if you don't want, but it will just not be made of plastic. And I vote to move the motion after this.
Okay, thank you. Ma'am?
Hi.
Hi.
Irene Payne. I live in Precinct 7 on Goose Neck Road, at the very head of Bass River. I have talked to the people at the transfer station, which I used to call the dump. And the water bottles are not recyclable. They are too thin. And so, they're just plastic waste. And they get burned up. So, not only do we suck in some nice little water... Plastic molecules when we drink the water from those little nasty bottles, but, you know, people also get to breathe it once it's burnt, up over the canal, of course, away from our own town. So, I am totally in favor of this. And I'm sorry, Mr. Coca-Cola Man. I like you, but I don't like plastic bottles.
Thank you.
I would also just like to comment real quick that the reason we're only targeting water is because we have another alternative, which is tap water. And then, also, there are aluminum and paper alternatives to plastic, single-use water bottles. Yeah, I just wanted to add those in there.
Okay. Chris?
Christine Greeley, Precinct 6. It's interesting we keep referring to these reusable containers because in the past month or so, there was actually a research study that indicated that even after sometimes a single use of them, they are dirtier than a toilet seat. And I guess what is very much of a concern to me is that we're having people go to public faucets and all with things that have been in their mouths, with the edges of those filling them against theirs, meaning that the germs that are appearing on that container are now in that faucet that are going to be put onto my container. And I'm wondering how many people actually go home at night and actually run their reusable containers through their dishwashers or do them in some other way to clean. But I think there's some serious issues about how these are being used and the facilities for where they're getting filled. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Final question?
I was just going to say, I encourage people to wash their reusable water bottles. And then, also, the hydration stations, you put your water bottle under it. You don't put the lip of your bottle to the actual faucet, just so you know.
Well, that... Okay. Well, one more question. Sir?
Yes. I just want people to think about what the...
Can you identify yourself, please?
Oh, Hank Eichner. Just want people to understand what the alternatives are going to be. If you get your water in glass bottles, it weighs more, and a truck full of glass bottles, and it might be coming back to Coca-Cola being that, using those. It costs more energy to move glass bottles. It costs more energy to make a glass bottle or recycle it. The same thing for aluminum. Same thing for paper. And the paper, all the stuff that we're using, you know, for paper, that's going to be taking, for the climate people, more trees, reducing the stuff that way. So, anyways...
Can we move to questions?
That's just my thoughts.
Thank you very much. Do you have a question? Do you have a... Sir, do you have a...
Move to call the question?
We'll call the question. We're ready to vote. All in favor of Article 35? Please raise your hand and say aye. All opposed? The motion carries. Article 36?
Yes, it's called democracy.
Article 36? Tom, do you want to do it here or there?
I'll go up front.
Article 36 is our final article, petition article. Tom amended it. Do you want to read this, Tom, or do you have it? Go ahead. Article 36 is being presented by the petitioner, Mr. Sullivan. He doesn't have to... I'll introduce him, Mr. Tom Sullivan.
Okay. Good evening. I'll make it quick as possible. We all want to go home. I move the article as printed in a warrant with an amendment. Okay? The amendment is this, on Article 36, to delete Section 142-12 penalties and leave in Section 142-11.
Okay. Do we have a second? Okay. Recommendation from the Select Board?
With the amendment, the Select Board votes four in favor, one against.
Finance Committee? With the amendment?
Well, the Finance Committee was not made aware of the amendment.
Okay, they can defer.
So, our vote prior to this was against five to one. And we have not had a vote since the amendment because it wasn't presented to us.
So, it doesn't matter. Okay. Explanation?
Okay, an explanation. Back in... I'll make it quick. Back in last November, the town of Yarmouth passed an emergency water restriction bill. Okay, we all... It was fast-tracked to the town. Okay. There were two sections in there. One is 142-11 and 142-12. I made a motion tonight with the board to leave in the penalty section. Okay? There are some questions I still have on that, but I've made them to leave it in. And actually, to take it out. To take it out and leave in 142-11, which is... Part of it requires that property owners with in-ground sprinkler systems would be required to register with the town. During some of the selectman's meetings, it was... it was pretty obvious that they are targeting people in town. With the water meters, for one, that came out on September 8th. And also on the March 28th meeting, when the DPW director clearly stated they wanted this to target the people. There's a legal question. Our constitutional rights could be violated with the targeting. The law is still in effect. It is a bylaw. It is still in effect and not touched. But to target one section of the populace of the town and not enforce the law on the other is a violation of the 14th Amendment on equal application of the law. So this is why I'm asking you tonight to approve this with the amendment, to take, to, uh, delete the section that requires the property owners be forced to register. One final question I have on this is, I did discuss this with the Attorney General, who approved the warrant in November. And now she has questions. I have to call back tomorrow in regards to how this goes. There are some legal questions in regards to the unequal application of a bylaw. It has no effect, this, this has no effect on water conservation whatsoever. This is our, your rights. All right, you have property rights. The water conservation law is still in effect and still enforced.
Thank you, Tom. Do we have questions or comments? Yes, sir. We have a microphone issue here.
Hello, okay. David Bernstein to West area road. I have a question for the petitioner and then a comment depending upon his answer. I'm very confused by what you said because you said two different things.
Okay.
Is 12, 142-11 amended that you wanna take it out? Is that what you're saying?
No, 142-11 stays in.
So, so, so we will have to register?
No, it will delete, it's staying in the article. 142-11 is staying in the article. In other words, it will be deleted from the bylaw if we vote in favor of it.
I'm sorry, I'm confused. Can someone else explain this? If you're, if you're getting, if you're
You have to register, but there's no penalty.
I'm sorry, what?
It, it basically says you have to register your irrigation system, but, but the penalty is taken out.
142-12 is taken out.
That's what it says, so you draw your own conclusions.
No, I think it's important. I know exactly what I'm gonna vote on. 142-11 is staying in. I still have to register. 142-12 is there'll be a penalty if I violate the bylaw.
Okay, I'll, if I can
You wanna repeat the motion then, Tom?
The petition article clearly is, I'm gonna read it. To see if the town will vote to amend the Yarmouth general bylaw, Chapter 142. Okay, water supply, conservation in emergencies as enacted on November 15th, 2022, by deleting their form, and I'll put down Section 142-11. That'd be deleted from the bylaw.
Okay, now I understand. Thank you. Now I've got a comment.
Okay.
I am against the, changing the bylaw. I walked during the, um, last summer when we weren't supposed to use irrigation at all. I walked my neighborhood often. And there were 50 houses who kept their irrigation on through a terrible drought. Let's remember, this is only going to happen as far as penalties are concerned if the water department tells us to turn off or curtail our, uh, use of our irrigation. The problem is when I called up the water department, I said, you know, some of these houses are still doing it. They said, well, there's not much we can do about it except for ask them to stop. And people did not stop. We need some juice behind it to stop people from wasting water when we're in a drought. Let's remember, this is only in a drought, not every day.
Okay.
And to register this, this idea about rights of privacy or whatever, there are a lot of things I have to register for. I have to register my car, I have to register for a license. I can go on and on. This is to protect our aquifer from being overused during a time when there is a drought. Period. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I answer that?
Do you wanna respond, Tom?
I can answer that question. What the town has been calling for is targeting people. If you have a in-ground system, they're gonna target you. And how are they gonna do it? By the water meters. They have already been doing it. They can check your water usage. It's done for billing. When this, the new systems were put in, that's what we were told. This was for billing. But now they've gone one step further, and they're checking because they, in September 8th selectmen's meeting, clearly stated that people complain. And I agree, people should buy by what the, uh, if we had a restriction, you abide by it. I agree with that. I'm not gonna argue that. But how did they check it? They went in and checked the water usage. They issued 30 warnings on people, and then no one has any idea that they were checking on the water. All right, this is only gonna delete this because it equal part of the law. You're targeting people in the law. Our Constitution clearly states in the 14th Amendment that all laws must be equally applied. This is a bylaw, and it must be applied equally, whether you're targeting people or you're gonna target people for using hoses with regular ones being used. But this is only targeting the people who have in-ground systems. Questions were brought up about it selecting in the town during the meetings about backflows. It's required by coding to have backflow regulators on your system. If you don't have one, then you should upgrade it. But this is all this is doing. You're leaving the penalties in, but you're taking out the section where it targets people's individual rights. Because, as I said, the Attorney General wants to know on this because she admitted she should have looked at the bylaw a lot closer. And I'm just trying to eliminate any liability to the town on lawsuits because this could end up with, be that.
Sir, question?
Hank Isha. This is not penalizing, this, uh, thing, it's not penalizing people who are watering their lawns. This has nothing to do with the penalties. It's just people registering. And I got a question. I'm confused like the other guy. You said this is removing 142-11, but not 142-12? No, 142-11 is in the article. It states. 142-12, the penalties will come out and stay in the general bylaw. This calls for both to be deleted. Right. So I'm only deleting the penalties, which will actually stay in the bylaw. Even though this is saying it's removing it? Excuse me? This says it removes it? I'm removing, the amendment is removing that section of the article. So it's removing 142-12, the penalties? Yes, it removes it from this article. It will revert, it will stay in the general bylaw. If we vote for 120, 142-11, then that will be removed from the general bylaw. But this is voting for both, right? No, it's amended. Where's it, where's the amendment? You're amending it right now? Yeah, I read the amendment. So let's vote on the amendment to take out the section. Ken?
Sir? Sir, gentlemen?
Yes. John Henderson, Precinct 1, Yarmouth Port. I have here a two-page sheet that shows the history of the droughts in Massachusetts that came from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It goes from 2001 to 2023, and it's drought levels by region, different regions in the state. And the Cape and Islands is one region. This whole situation is really a tempest in the teapot. I don't know why we even need to regulate our water usage. There were, there have been no droughts on the Cape from 2003 to, through 2013. There were, there were no droughts in 2015. In 2018 through 2022, there were no droughts. All other years on, on the Cape, there's, there's four, four levels of droughts. There was only one month out of 20 years during which we had a level four emergency, and that was August of last year.
Could I, could I interrupt you for a minute? The bylaw is already, there is a bylaw that was an extensive bylaw passed last year. This is a carve-out with an amendment. Can you speak to that?
Yes, we're, we're, the carve-out is to eliminate the need to register our systems. And, and this is, this is in support of the fact that we really don't need to have systems registered because the drought levels have been insignificant for, for the last 20 years. And I, I think it's unfortunate that this bylaw passed last year. So I am in support of Tom Sullivan's, uh, motion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
One more question?
Yes. I'm not in support of his amendment at all. We did vote on this already. And every time somebody doesn't like a vote, you come back and say, let's amend it, let's eliminate it, let's amend it. We knew what we were voting on before, and I think we still do. There, I don't know where you think there hasn't been a drought since it was announced it was a drought last year. But it's also a question of regulation, not of grabbing your rights. You have to register your dog. You have to register your car. And it, I, I just think that you're invoking the Constitution is, is overblown.
Thank you. Hearing, seeing, hearing no more questions, comments. Ready to take a vote?
Can I answer that question?
Sure, Tom, go ahead.
To say that invoking the Constitution is overblown is serious. Serious to me and serious to a lot of people. You would like to have the law applied to all. It was dawn, that 14th Amendment, you gotta remember, goes back to the end of the Civil War with slavery. And that's why it was put in. All laws must be applied equally for every state, every town. Okay? So it's, I don't believe that it's overblown. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor of the amended motion, Article 36, please raise your card and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That's too close to call. Right? Tellers? We need a
Could the tellers come forward again, please?
Last call. Last call.
Oh, I have to wait to see what he says.
I haven't called
I'm in favor of it, as you know.
Yeah. We got all the tellers?
Count me twice.
Tellers, come on down. Did you lose one? Okay, we ready? All in favor of the amendment, please stand up. At the amended article, please stand up. All opposed to the Article 36 as amended? Please stand up, hold your cards up.
I think it's gonna fail.
Seventy-five in favor? The motion is, the final vote is seventy-five in favor, eighty-six opposed, and the motion does not carry. That ends the article portion of the town meeting. I'll, first of all, thank everybody, and I'll accept the motion to adjourn. All in favor? Thank you again.